Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the meeting of May 6th of the Avalon City Council. And before we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation, I would like to defer to Scott.
Yeah, yesterday, the United States Supreme Court validated prayer at public meetings. They've issued certain guidelines in their opinion. We're working on that to make certain that we continue to be in compliance with that. One minor change you'll notice is that when we stand up, we'll be saying, "Please stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance." We're not going to say anything about remaining standing for the invocation. To summarize the Supreme Court's new rule, or at least clarification, I'm going to read to you the key sentence in an 80-page opinion. Prayer that is solemn and respectful in tone, that invites lawmakers to reflect upon shared ideals and common ends before they embark on the fractious business of governing, serves a legitimate function for complying with First Amendment. So, keep that in mind. It's got to be respectful in tone, reflect upon shared ideals and common ends.
Thank you very much. Okay, if we would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and Richard Hernandez will lead us.
My pledge to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And City Manager Ben Harvey will lead us in the invocation.
You may or may not remain standing. Gracious heavenly Father, please guide the City Council as they legislate on items of importance to this community. Please help them to remember what unites us, and not that which divides us, and to focus on commonalities and not differences. We ask in your name. Amen.
And Denise, if we could have the roll call?
Can I remember to tell you to do the roll call?
Councilmember Cassidy?
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Sampson?
Here.
Mayor Protim Olson?
Present.
And Mayor Marshall?
Here.
Okay, are there any announcements?
Yes, I have at least two, and I think there may be others. So, if you don't mind, Mayor, I'll start with two that I have.
Yes, please.
The first announcement is that, under the presentation section this evening, there will not be a presentation from Captain Steve Powell regarding paramedic services, as he was unable to make it over on the boat today. However, I believe we have rescheduled him for the first meeting in June. Is that correct, Denise? She's nodding her head.
Yes.
Okay, that's the 3rd of June, I believe. Does that sound right? First meeting in June, whatever date that is. Okay. Second announcement that I have is from Catalina Choices. They are offering a responsible beverage server training in Avalon program. On May 14th and 15th, Catalina Choices, in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce, is hosting a license education on alcohol and drug certification for all bartenders and restaurant servers in Avalon. It's being provided by California Serve Smart, which is an ABC agency. The schedule is the 14th from 12:00 to 3:30 at the Chamber, or from 4:00 to 7:30 at the M, same day, or on Thursday, the 15th, from 10:00 to 1:30, again, oh, excuse me, 10:00 to 1:30 here at the Council Chambers in City Hall. You can contact Samantha Prince at the Chamber, or see the Chamber homepage for additional questions. Thank you.
I have one.
Sure.
The annual health fair is embarking on a new concept this year, taking it to the streets, where it's closer, more convenient, and easier for people to access. The important information and services, from blood tests to disaster preparedness. This year, the health fair is on Thursday, May 22nd, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. It is celebrating 30 years of island health, sponsored by the Catalina Island Medical Center, and including low-cost or free medical screenings, and health and well-being consultations. You can make your donation to support this year's innovative event at CIMC PO Box 1563, or if you have any information, 310-510-0700, if you have questions or want to add any information to it. And that comes from the medical center.
I have two items. One, even though we're having more than one meeting tonight, we're having a meeting at the successor agency. We worked with the California Department, the Attorney General's opinion in the Fair Political Practices Commission, and some other entities that we represent. We no longer, for Avalon, have to make the announcement that we're having multiple meetings, because in your municipal code, it says that you get $300 per meeting, regardless of how many meetings you have, and you're not allowed to get any more money. So, because of that, we don't have to make that announcement anymore. $300 a month.
Yeah.
The second thing is, and this goes along with item number seven on the consent calendar, as well as item number 11 on the regular action calendar. Yesterday, in addition to validating prayer at public meetings, the California Supreme Court declined taking up a Ninth Circuit opinion on wastewater systems. And it's government responsibility. The Ninth Circuit concluded that a public entity that has drains in it and sewer systems in it is liable for any discharges that go into those waters and into the ocean, even if that entity is not the party placing the bad stuff into the system. As a regulatory agency, the county of LA was basically held to be responsible for everything that is in its sewers, even if put in by other people. And so, the Ninth Circuit said you really have to, as a public entity, has to vigorously enforce whatever laws it has on its books, and take whatever measures it has to make certain that the bad stuff does not get into the sewer systems or stormwater systems. So, that's just further background into the continued work we're doing on the cease and desist order, and you have two items tonight that are related to further enforcing of that. I just thought I'd give you an overview. Again, this is relevant. The Supreme Court, yesterday, basically let the Ninth Circuit opinion stand.
Thank you. Are there any announcements from the community? Please.
Hello, New City Council.
Well, hello.
Diane Stone, President of the Catalina Island Humane Society. We are here to just let you know and to remind the community that on May 30th and 31st, we're having a low-cost vaccine clinic. We're requiring that people contact us ahead of time to receive a voucher. The voucher costs $5, and that will go toward your expenses for the vaccines that you choose to have. By contacting Marty at 1613-310-510, 1613, she can meet with anyone interested in getting a voucher. We're also going to have people in the arcade from time to time. Sorry, I can't give you dates. It's just always difficult to get enough volunteers and to know ahead of time when we're going to be doing that. But we'll have that out there. The vaccines that we're offering, the first one is the rabies, and it's a $6 charge. All dogs three months of age and older are required by state, county, and city ordinances to be vaccinated against rabies. The shot is good for three years. You also have to have that in order to get your dog license, your city license. The other shot that's being offered is the DHLPP, which is a five-in-one shot. It's $15, and that's Distemper and Parvo. That's not mandatory, but it is a smart thing to have for the safety of your pets, especially in a community that's this small, where there really is a lot of interaction between the animals, if you have your animal out there. Bordatella is another shot that's available for $15. That's commonly called kennel cough. And again, if you have a dog that's socializing, it's good to have that. The other thing is that if you're planning on boarding your dog anyplace, they're going to require that shot. In conjunction with this, the city has agreed to reduce the cost of the dog license. What's the time limit on?
10 days.
10 days. After receiving your shot, you must go to the city, and you have 10 days from that time to get your dog license. And because it's going to be June by the time this happens, the city has agreed, my understanding, is to waive the late fee and reduce the initial fee to half-price. I believe it's $27 currently for a neutered animal, $54 for an unneutered animal. So, it would be half of that cost.
Wow.
And the really important thing is that, once, depending on how well this is received and what kind of a response we get, we will do this again in a few weeks after this one, if we have enough interest and enough people that want to do this. The important thing is that, once we've done these clinics, the city is then directing their animal control people to be very proactive in seeing and checking that people's dogs are licensed and do have their rabies shots. And if you don't, you will be fined. The last thing I want to say is that this is Be Kind to Animals Week, and I happened to find in my pocket one of these. And I'm just reminding people who have pets to please be kind to the island, and everybody use your blue bags. Anything else? Any questions?
I have a question. Would you have any idea why the Distemper Parvo is not mandatory in this community?
I do not know.
Okay. Just because we've had such a big controversy with the conservancy and the local dogs about Distemper Parvo, and I don't know, maybe that would be a good thing in the future, to see if we could do that.
You know, a conscientious pet owner is going to get that shot, because the last thing you want is your dog to come down with something that is preventable. It's like not getting a polio vaccine for your kids.
Right.
You know, it's just a really smart shot to have.
It certainly is, and I just wouldn't not hate to have our city blamed for something that we were not responsible for, like what happened in the past. So, okay, I would encourage everybody to get the Distemper Parvo shot. That's a very good idea. Thank you. That was a very good.
And I just want to say, because you had explained before to me when we met on the street, that this is, it is such a reduced rate, because we don't have the doctor visit and the required exam on top of that. So, it makes it extremely affordable.
That's, that's an important point that you're bringing up. This is not, this is the cost, the Humane Society is subsidizing the expense for these shots. And these rates are the rates that Pasadena charges for their low-cost vaccination clinics. But the important thing is that Dr. D. will do a quick cursory, just looking at your pet, but it's not going to be an examination. There are, so consequently, there are, you know, if your dog needs to see the vet for a medical reason, you're going to have to make that appointment at another time. We are scheduling these very quickly, every 15 minutes. So, there's not a lot of time for him to spend with you discussing health issues with your pet. That you need to schedule an actual appointment for. The only other thing I wanted to mention was that the article sort of implied that vaccines aren't given here by Dr. Danny at the clinic, and of course, they are. But this is just, just the vaccine.
And I just have another question. Is there a way, do you have the ability to have this translated into Spanish, or can we or somebody out there assist with that?
That is a great idea. Actually, if we could bring it to the city, is there someone here who could do that?
Yes, sir, is.
Woo-hoo, good.
Go ahead.
Exciting. There's one other point. I don't know. Not important.
I did ask you another question. I don't know if you had an opportunity to look into it. For those of us, we don't need our rabies for, like, not my personal rabies, but my dog's rabies shots until November. If we're getting it now, if there's any detriment to the pet, or is it, because it's a three-year shot anyway, do you think that's?
You know, I don't know, and that's a good question. I'll actually ask Dr. D. that. That could be something. Another question that came up, somebody said they've got a rescue dog. They have no idea whether the dog has current on any of its shots. Obviously, since there's no way to know, one should go ahead.
Okay.
You know.
So, that might answer the question that it isn't really dangerous?
No.
To have it done a few months early?
I will confirm with Dr. D. on that. The other thing I wanted to mention was that, I passed it again. Okay. I know. Never mind.
Really good presentation.
Thank you.
Yeah, you did a good job.
Um.
It'll come to you.
Well, if it comes to you, clap on, raise your hand.
Absolutely. Yeah, you can come back up.
Thank you very much. It's a wonderful service you're doing for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Great.
It was Ralph.
If you're not sure whether your animal needs its shots, you know, you can't remember how long ago, or whatever, if you don't have your tags, or you don't have that information, if you could call the clinic ahead of time and check with Annie. 1210 is the clinic number, but she has the files there, and she could check ahead of time, so that you know, and they would know just where you are currently.
Right.
Yeah, sir.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Diane.
Hello, Ralph. How's it feel to be on the other side of the?
I love it. I love it. Congratulations, Annie, Cindy, Joe.
Thank you.
You look good up here.
Me as well.
And I feel good here.
Thank you.
I'm here for a couple of reasons. Personal, I want to apologize for not being here that Tuesday night. The, you know, don't let the door hit you, and you know what, see you later. I had to schedule MRI for the next day, so I decided to go early, go on the boat the night before. I got there for the MRI, and they told me my blood test was 17 days too old, and I couldn't get the MRI. So, it was a brain scan, and I told them, "You're wasting your time. You're not going to find anything." Anyway, primarily, I'm here, oh, by the way, thank you for the good words on that meeting. I heard them. Thank you. I'm here on behalf of the VFW. I want to, I want to thank the staff for coming up with the Grand Marshal. Of all the years I've been here, that was a tremendous selection. The Grand Marshal, for everyone that doesn't know, will be all those veterans that served in World War II. So, since we're streaming on the Internet, we have people out there in our extended family that, if they have anyone that's served in World War II, that has any affiliation at all with Avalon, please call the city and, and make it, make it available, make that individual available to be a part of the Fourth of July Parade. I think putting all of World War II people, even if we have 10 golf carts full of vets, I think it'd be great. And it's going to be an outstanding event. And city staff put that together, and I really appreciate it. So does the VFW. And that's it.
Well, while you're standing there, though, Ralph, since you did miss the meeting, and you haven't been invited to pick up your mail.
Pick up my mail. Oh, yeah.
Did we want to read it? What the heck? Do you want us to read it, or did we?
We did. We did read it in the meeting if you wanted to read again. It's fine.
Is it, it's our, we're at?
It has, yeah.
Sure, go ahead.
Read it. Let's read it. He's here now.
The proclamation, the City Council of the City of Avalon honoring Ralph Morrow for his years of service as mayor and councilmember of the City of Avalon. Whereas, Ralph Morrow has been elected as mayor and councilmember in Avalon numerous times since 1992, for a total of 16 years on the City Council. And whereas, Ralph has been a longtime supporter of the Catalina Island Medical Center, and enthusiastic proponent of their future plans, having been on the hospital board of trustees for a number of years. And whereas, Ralph is a veteran of the United States Navy, having served our country during the Korean conflict as a crewman in a P-2 Neptune. And whereas, Ralph is a passion, Ralph is passionate about helping his fellow veterans, actively participating in the Avalon branch of the Veterans of Foreign Wars, VFW. And whereas, Ralph is highly involved with numerous philanthropic causes within the community, including the Children's Dental Clinic. And whereas, Ralph is a public safety proponent, and has been a longtime supporter of the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, as well as the Los Angeles County Fire Baywatch Program. And whereas, the community can thank Ralph for helping to bring Internet and enhanced cable service to Avalon, as he owned and operated the cable utility of town, and provided these services up until recently. And whereas, Ralph is an advocate for alternate energy and advanced technology, and has worked tirelessly, tirelessly in an effort to improve Avalon's energy future. And whereas, during his tenure, Ralph has sought to foster key intergovernmental relationships that are important to the City of Avalon, as well as Catalina Island, including those with Los Angeles County Supervisor Don Canavi's office, among others. Now, therefore, on behalf of the Avalon City Council and the citizens of Avalon, we hereby express our sincere gratitude to Ralph for his years of service on the City Council and his dedication to the community.
And we will move on to oral communications, but I would like to remind you, in an effort to maintain our rules of order, we are going to do our best to limit the speakers to about three minutes, and as well as council oftentimes, so that we can kind of keep these, these meetings moving along. So, okay, oral communications.
Iris.
Yeah, come on up, Iris.
Thank you. Excuse me, I don't like to talk in public, though, barely me. This is going to be really short, sweet, and good. Most of the time I'm here because I'm mad. But this is about our Sheriff's Department. In the past, I've been really critical about them, but that's the way, only because I love the town. I can't remember when the skaters were here, the K9 dog was taken to the mall. And I have heard negative things about it, and I think it's the beginning of a change. And I just, I'm here to tell them thank you, because there were some stuff going on, but that some people don't agree. Well, I feel bad, but it's like them if they don't, and them if I do. So, I see it as a very good beginning. They still don't have 100%, and the Capitol Federal, he knows that, of my approval, you know, but I think they're doing a good job. But despite doing that, we don't want drugs. A lot of people don't consider pet as a drug. I consider that it's a step down to stronger ones. So, that's basically what I want to say.
Thank you for sharing.
I'm still watching you.
Thank you, Iris. Thank you, Iris. Moving on to the, any other, any other oral communications? Yes?
I got one more. Figuring that a picture's worth a thousand birds, I brought a couple pictures. So, I'll be short.
So, I can save it in a few minutes for you, to test that I can.
Short, Indian, not on my special, in the course.
Broken rap.
Okay.
Put it back on through. I came tonight to talk about a special issue to me. It's called the white curb. I'm here out of frustration, and there is no procedure in the city to resolve this issue. Let me tell you that on August 23rd last year, I applied to have a white curb over at the Hermosa Hotel. The other hotels have it, and I wanted to have what the other hotels had. So, I applied, and within a couple of weeks, I spoke to Pastor, and I said, "Hey, what's going on?" He says, "Ah, it's been taken over to Denise." So, then I talked to Denise a little bit, but before you know it, a month had passed, two months had passed, something like that, and Ben was now the city manager. And when Ben was the city manager, things slowed down, and communication was very difficult, responses weren't made. It was just a, just a hard time for me. So, I just kept plugging along, and finally, I thought, you know, I should come and see you. And I wanted just to read one sentence from a, from an email that I got this week from Ben. I was shocked to get it, but it says, quote, "I want to make sure that you know that we will not be taking any action at this time, or in the foreseeable future, considering the construction and impact to parking and traffic at this location. It does not make any sense to do so." And I thought, you know, this isn't right, and this isn't, this isn't, this construction wasn't even conceived of the first time that Ben said no. So, I thought the best thing I can do is just show you what other hotels have on the island. So, if you can see, this is the Seacrest Hotel. I'm not even sure why they've got a white curb, because they're closest to the mall, and they've only got 10 rooms, but they've got a white curb because they're a hotel, and they deserve one. You might note on this interesting photograph that a property line is thus, and the white curb actually encroaches halfway into the neighbor's front yard. And so, not only is the white curb at this little hotel that may not need it, it's actually in front of the neighbor next door. And so, that's one of the issues. Do we have room for white curb? Now, I'll show you the Glenmore. The Glenmore has a passenger loading and unloading zone. That's what I should have, is a passenger loading and unloading zone. I've got more rooms than the Glenmore. I make more tot than the Glenmore. I have more clients than the Glenmore, and I have more vehicle than the Glenmore. But the question is, why do they have one, and I can't get one? I don't understand. Let me show you another picture. Hotel Catalina, you'll see its label, "Super-sized White Curb," because that hotel has a white curb long enough to park two vehicles in front of it. Why they have such a large one, and I can't get one? Now, let's face it, of all the hotels on the island, nobody has more curb than the Hermosa. I've got 160 feet of curb in front of my building, and I'm looking for a 15-foot white curb. That's all. I'm not asking for the whole thing to be for me. I'm looking for 15 feet, and I've got 160. So, my white curb would be not like the Seacrest approaching on the neighbors. It fits very comfortably right in front of the hotel. Here's the El Dorado Terrace. Does not have a white curb. It has two yellow curbs and a red curb between them. That's, they don't have a white curb. They have two yellow curbs with a red curb that separates the two yellow curbs. So, taxis can pull up all they want to drop off people, because there's so much not, so much space along their frontage, that you're not allowed to park golf carts or regular-sized cars. So, they don't need a white curb, because they have so much yellow curb. This is the Aurora. The Aurora Hotel has a very large white curb in front of it. All I want is a white curb. Here's the Vicente, or what you could call the Garden. It's now the Garden, West Garden Courtyard, or whatever. Okay. Tucy's got a yellow curb right there. It's always been there. It was there for the Vicente. So, there's a couple of issues here. The very first issue is, and I imagine that's why taxi is here, because of this curb issue, I have stopped last month's video monitoring of my security cameras at the Hermosa Hotel, when I found over 50 traffic violations by the taxi company that when I found over 50 traffic violations by the taxi company that double parks in the street, making a traffic hazard, because now the street is reduced to one way. And why does it happen? Not for us, even though I'd love to have our people be more upgraded in taxi. Our people aren't taxi people. But there's a beautiful property right next door to me, Catalina Island Inn, and the majority of their people are taxi people. They're higher-class people, a little more income, and they use taxis to get to the hotel. But they can't get to the hotel because there's no place for them to park, so the taxis just park in the center of the street and let the people in and out. I don't think it's fair that all those taxi drivers would be in jeopardy of having so many tickets played on them, because there's no place for them to offload. So I just wanted to say, I've been bouncing my head against the wall, I've been asking city manager after city manager. I know that Ben has this exotic idea of what cars should be doing in the city, and where they're gonna be in the future, and a future plan, but the bottom line is, I'm there, I'm working the hotels, I'm making it be as best as it can be, I'm sticking a lot of money into it, I'm taking great care of guests, I am transporting them, I do not charge a nickel. It's actually more of a pain in the keister to provide service, you can ask any of the hotels, than it actually is worth, but it's a service that you do to enhance the tourists' vacation. Their experience is up, and I'm asking that out of my 160 feet, I'm allowed a 15-foot curb, and if you don't want to make it white, then make it yellow. If you don't want to make it yellow, make it white. I'll work with whatever you have, but it will not come from city manager. City manager has said, as I read, "Isn't happening, not going to happen, no way it's gonna happen." And so he's your employee, and I would just say, give him direction so that he knows this is the right thing to do. And I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation.
That was, you went to a lot of work, I will have to tell you that. The, I don't know, this isn't, when things come from the floor, like, there's no action is taken, correct? So...
You don't need to motion. In fact, this isn't something, I believe, you can ask the city attorney, this is something that comes up for a vote. This is something that you can just decide to direct, because it's not...
Exactly.
Advice, please, Scott.
Yes.
The issue is, if the city manager has made a determination on something, the municipal code does provide that if it's a final determination, that you can appeal it to the city council, and therefore, we put it on the agenda, and the city council can hear the appeal. And so you can direct us to do that. I think the other alternative, I guess, is what he's looking at, is direct staff to exercise authority as the traffic officer and put the white curb or yellow curb in the Hermosa, in front of the Hermosa Hotel. And there are reasons why, as a traffic engineer, I believe that the city manager has determined that that would not be appropriate. So I think probably the best course, if you wanted to hear this, would be if it's an appeal to the council, it goes on an upcoming agenda, where you hear all the facts and you make a determination.
But Scott, why would I have to pay $842 for them to hear the facts that I've just presented today, when they could just say, "That's good that he has a curb, let him have a curb." Why go through the two-month process and $842 is additional dollars of tax to me? Why can't they just say, "Hey, go ahead and give him a curb, everybody else has one"?
There's a, because it's not on the agenda to take action tonight, and with the appeal process, there's usually a noticing, for this particular item, there may be a notice required to adjoining neighbors, so that they can present evidence or concerns that they may have about a white curb.
May I request that the city waive the $842 so that I can come back next month and show these photos to you?
How much staff time do you envision on this appeal, Mr. Campbell?
Oh, I envision minimal, if any, a city attorney time, other than reviewing the, you know, the staff report. I would leave it to Mr. Harvey to talk about how much staff time in terms of presenting reasons why, justifying, from his point of view, the denial.
Yeah, it'd be less than an hour to write a staff report, half an hour.
It's a reasonable consideration, absolutely. So I think we ought to, the gentleman, to consider his motion, and what he's bringing up in front of the council, don't we?
And the question that he has, would you be wanting, willing to waive the permit or the appeal fee?
The appeal fee, that is because we're not making a, that is because we're not making a decision tonight.
Well, no, no. In order...
I mean, everybody else has to pay an appeal fee. No, I think that the appeal fee ought to stand, but we ought to definitely make consideration to bring this up.
Well, if I appeal it, there's a definite, there's no option but to do that. I'm just asking, since we see that the other hotels have the curbs, and it's the right thing to do, and you could decide just to do it if you wanted to, the option to have it come formally, why would you decide to have me pay $842 so that I can come back? You don't, you don't need, you could actually just say, "We'd like to have a curb today."
Is that a consideration we can make at this meeting?
If I could. I think in all fairness, you certainly have heard what Mr. Milan has had to say on this matter, and I appreciate that he's had that opportunity, but I'm not prepared tonight. I've not had the opportunity to outline the timeline of events or the reasons as to why the determination was made, and I think that in the interest of providing you with both sides of the story, you probably should agendize it so that I could have that opportunity.
Yeah.
I just want to say, in all fairness, that the actual email that was written to you did not say, nor ever, the actual email to you said, "Not in the foreseeable future, considering this construction and impact to parking and traffic at this location." No, I mean, no action has been taken, considering the massive amount of construction at this time. I would like to respectfully request that when the vault project is completed and when the construction is completed on the museum, I'm happy to hear and potentially provide that curb to you at that time, but I think now there is a huge impact on traffic right now.
Absolutely, there is not a huge impact, and I'll tell you a couple of reasons why. But first off, to hold it till after the museum is completed, over a year from now, would be a real hardship of continuation. And this construction is just baloney. It's three months and it's gone. I had the same complications with Ben since he, since the week he got hired, has always been, there's too much traffic, there's no place to park, there's too much traffic, there's no place to park. And the truth is, it doesn't take any extra curb. I'm already parking there, I'm parking on green curb. So whether or not you give us a white curb that makes everything work right, including the Catalina Island Inn, whether or not you give us a white curb, the vehicles are still there. So it's not like we're taking any curb away by allowing these things to be there. And we've been through, I've been through many iterations with Ben. I think that it's kind of a chummy thing. He said, "Oh, no, use the one by Vons, use the one by Vons." Well, you can't have the guests take over to Vons and come up. The taxi company doesn't let anyone off at Vons when they're going to the Island Inn, okay, or they're going to the other hotels on the street, like the Santa Margarita, okay, or Marquita. So what I'm saying is, I'm frustrated, that's why I came here. There is no time involved with Ben making a response. He's already said, "There's construction and there's traffic conditions." And he says, "There's just lots of traffic conditions." I said, "Admittedly, there is, but you just approved an 11,000-square-foot building on Metropole with a built-in residence, and not one parking space is required. Not one parking space was in the plans." So there will be no difference in congestion between now and next year and the following year. That doesn't change anything. So I'm saying, just tell him to give me a curb, and he can. What response is he gonna make for a half an hour that he didn't already make in this, saying, "We can't let you do it"?
Again, I think the appropriate thing is, and I think what Mr. Milan is appealing, is the decision to not immediately grant you a curb now, and to, right?
No, no, not to grant me one in last August, last September, before construction ever started. It's just, it's just to continue on. Can you see that, Mayor?
I'm actually trying to help you.
No, you're not. Scott, not since I met you. Okay, come on.
What, there appears to be four votes for hearing the appeal at an upcoming meeting. Is that correct? The issue, though, is the fee. Would the council give direction to staff to waive the appeal fee?
I would.
Me, I don't know. I'm not in favor of waiving any fees. We're kind of dire straits for money, as a city as it is, and I don't want to set a precedent, if somebody else comes to appeal something and say, "Hey, can you waive that for him? Can you waive that for me?" That's just my opinion.
I'm not into waiving the fee, but I certainly am into considering some of Mr. Milan's points. I mean, he's got some serious safety issues up there, and I don't think money is the problem here. It's, double parking can be a problem.
We could start citing tomorrow. We could start citing tomorrow. We've got a camera right there.
Let's, let's...
I think, I think we need to stop. I believe we're giving direction.
Direction, well, about the fee. We're going to set it for the appeal. I will make certain whether there's notice required or not, that that's done. Again, the issue is still the fee. Does the council want to give direction in terms of waiving that fee?
Is there a motion to either waive or may, do we need to make a motion to maintain the fee?
No, you can give direction. You're just gonna give direction about the fee.
Well, it sounds like there's two already that say, "Keep the fee." Ollie?
Have the fee.
What?
Have it, cut it in half.
Cut it in half?
Like I said, we're gonna set a precedent, everybody's gonna come and say, "Well, he got half, I get half." What's to stop that? I think you should maintain and stick to our guns, stick to the fees. That's my, my bet.
I'm gonna have to, I do not want to set a precedent. I wish that we were not in this situation to begin with, and I feel very strongly that traffic is severely impacted with construction right now. So I wish that we would just not have any fees at all and let this move forward, but I understand Mr. Milan wants an answer tomorrow, so I'm gonna have to say the fee stays.
Fee, fee, fee. All right, so we're gonna put it on the appropriate agenda, we'll look to see what noticing requirements are, and then it'll be either on next month's or next meeting or the meeting after that.
Okay. Thank you.
And then you can talk about, if you want to make a public comment, please, now's the time.
Connie Stewart, Catalina Transportation, General Manager.
I just had a question for Mark, because you're talking about how we're in your way.
Wait, Connie, talk into the microphone.
Sorry. So you're, you're talking about that we're in your way because we're not parking? Or do you want to permanently park your vehicle in front of your hotel? Because right now, I know a lot of times you're actually parked in our taxi zone. So this is why I'm asking.
We are allowed to be in a taxi zone, but that's part of our regulation. What I'm trying to do is make a parking place in front of the Hermosa that you can drop off people, I can drop off people, and your drivers don't have to be subjected to double parking, which is illegal and is unsafe and should be enforced, and we have lax enforcement. And this happened, I went last month, when I counted 50, I stopped counting, because I realized it's more than 50 by a lap in the month that your drivers drove in the center of the street and let people out.
I understand that part. I mean, we, this is an issue we've dealt with, with the council many times, because it's very difficult to drop people off, whether it's the Hermosa, whether it's Catalina Island Inn, wherever, right? It's very, very difficult. And I would say with this construction, it's 100 times harder to drop people off in a very safe area. And we're told not to double park, I know that we double park, I don't know how to deter that unless I drop the people off around the corner, which I don't think that looks very good for our city to do that either. So that's really all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Connie.
Any more oral communications?
Just for directions, Milan, if you could, the email was dated, what was the date of that email?
Original email back was April, or the email back was April 24th?
Ben's.
2014.
Allegedly.
April 24th, 2014.
This has been discussed multiple times. It was not just this one.
All right, okay, the last email, let's just say, whatever that date was. Can you file your...
It was given to me this week.
Okay, if you could file your appeal with...
It was sent April 24th. I got it just this week with information I requested from the city.
Again, just for, to make sure everything's appropriate under the municipal code, it says 15 days after you get that notice. So that would be, let's just say, just file a letter with the city clerk, saying you're appealing the decision or the action in that email, okay? If you could do that by Thursday, that'd be great. And then we can set it on...
By Thursday this week?
Yes.
And also pay the fee this week, when I file the letter.
That's what the municipal code says, 15 days after receipt of written notice.
When I got it versus 15 days from when it was reported to the center. That's just the rule.
It says 15 days from the day of the action that was taken. So again, what the municipal code says.
Moving right along to the consent calendar.
Yes, Mayor, you've got eight items on the consent calendar, nine with one as the council acting in the role of the successor agency. First item are actions from the April 15th council meeting. The second are expenditures for approval warrants in the amount of approximately $500,000 and payroll in the amount of $193,000 approximately, for a total of $707,000 approximately. You also have the implementation of the Phase 1 20-year sewer financial plan, which is part of the city's cease and desist order requirements. You have a resolution appointing an alternate director to the Public Agency Risk Sharing Authority of California, aka ParsAC, which is the city's third-party joint liability pool. You have a change order to Blue Water Design for the fuel dock project for a geotechnical study. You have an item pertaining to confined space entry and retrieval training for the city over all departments. You have a resolution adopting an enforcement response plan for violations of the city water control and sewer ordinances. And you have an item rescinding the full-time employee hiring freeze, that's as the city council. As the successor agency, you also have an item related to the ongoing emergency repairs to Crescent Avenue storm drain.
Is there a motion, or any...
I'd like to pull item number two and item number eight. And with that, I would make a motion to approve.
I think six, five.
And five?
Sorry.
All right. So help me out here. So we're going to, is there a motion to approve the others first, and then we can move on and discuss the others? Is that how we do this?
Yeah, I'm gonna staff on the meeting items.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, all in favor?
I'm curious about item number four.
I'm gonna pull item number four. Do you...
I'll amend the motion.
Okay. Maybe second it again?
So what's that?
Okay. All right, all in favor? Aye?
I think so.
Oops.
Oops.
All ayes. Thank you. Okay, item number two, Cindy?
Okay, item number two is the warrants list, and I just want to read into the record for future reference. I will be recusing myself on any warrants pertaining to Chet's Hardware, Island Fire Extinguishers Incorporated, Northwind Refrigeration Incorporated, Jordal Construction Incorporated, Catalina Laundry, the Avalon Hotel, and the Aurora Hotel and Spa. For future meetings, this would thus be, I would make a, potentially make a motion to approve with pulling any warrants previously disclosed.
You would be, any motion... You would, you would be, any motion on warrants, whether made by the council person or not, will from now on include that she will be abstaining from that portion of the warrants dealing with the businesses read into the record today, because she receives income from those businesses. So, she could.
Well, you like to complicate our lives, don't you?
No, I just made it easy for you. Do it one time, and we're good for four years.
Oh, okay, perfect. Good.
So, that was my only, my only comment for that, and also, or with that, then I would make a motion to approve item number two.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Four ayes and one abstention. Councilmember Caspi.
Item number four? Who pulled number four?
Joe.
Joe?
I did. I just didn't, I just didn't quite understand number four.
Would you like him to explain it?
Yes, I would, please.
Sure, no problem. So, the city of Avalon, along with thirty-seven other smaller cities throughout California, participates in a liability pool, a joint pool for liability and workers' compensation insurance. And as part of that, each city has a vote in how the pool is administered and its operations and its policies. And so, each member city appoints two delegates to the board. So, there's a, there's a director and an alternate director. As the city manager, I also oversee the risk management function here for the city, and so it's appropriate for me to finally change out one of the delegates to Parsac with myself so that I can actively participate on the board and be involved with the agency. Currently, the assistant fire chief serves in that role, and he certainly does a capable job. It's nothing about him not being able to serve in that function, but as the person who ultimately is responsible for risk management for the city, this will allow me to better be engaged and to actively be on the board. The way it stands currently, I can certainly interact with Parsac, and I can talk to the risk managers and the executive director, and I can go to the meetings, but I don't have a vote. And so, by, by changing this, this allows me to vote and to participate on the board, and that's why I'm asking the council to allow this change.
Okay, can I ask you who, who the other representative is for the city of Avalon who's on that board?
Sure. The finance director is the other delegate to Parsac.
Okay.
And that is generally because the risk management for the city falls under the finance director's role, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. I understand now. I'm okay with it.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Double.
Second?
All second.
Okay. All those in favor? I mean, all those in favor. Push your button.
All ayes.
This is fancy.
Really fancy.
Item number five.
Yeah, Dennis. Is Dennis here?
Yeah, Dennis, can you come up to the podium, please?
Just want to talk about the replacement project on the, on the gas dock facility. Just a couple of questions. It's been a few years since they've done anything, and I've seen the old plans for that. One of my concerns for this new project and doing it, we're not going to be able to do it again, so I think we need to try to get everything right. I was trying to think if there's some kind of way that, in the plans that you've seen for fire suppression system, a foam tank there, some kind of FDC on the roadside there in case something happens, you don't have to drive your trucks down into the scene. Is there any way we can incorporate that or look into that, or maybe get with the fire department and see what they think about it?
Of course. I think it's very important, and I want to thank you for bringing it to our attention. They submitted sixty percent plans today. They're under review, and upon your advice, we're going to ensure that the fire suppression system is there, whether it's a tank or potable water system, as in any new development. We're going to make sure it's there, and thanks for bringing it to our attention.
I would like to see, yeah, let me sure you get together with Chief Krog and them and go over that, and they'd have a little better solution.
Definitely.
What they, the best solution for that, if we can incorporate that in some way, and not to be so much cost, but it would sure help everybody's, when they go to the fires there, it's not a fun place to be, because I've been to a fire at that place, and you're standing on that dock, it's no fun.
You got it.
So, if we could help out in any way, I'd like to see us do that.
Well, thank you very much. Thanks for bringing it to our attention, and we'll, we'll get chief involved.
Okay.
Any other questions on this issue?
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Take a motion.
I make a motion.
Okay, tip of second?
Second.
Press your button. All, all ayes? Okay, and item number eight.
Oh, I pulled that one. Okay, so, my initial understanding, and I spoke to city manager and assistant, or chief operating officer, administrative officer, Denise. My initial understanding of the hiring freeze was for no new positions within the city. And since I've learned that that hiring freeze, as I now understand it, was no hiring at all for the city. And so, this item is before us to rescind that original motion. And I just want to make sure that Ole and Richard, that was your understanding of the original motion as you guys were on the council, was that it was to be no hiring at all?
Full-time. Full-time benefit positions.
No full-time benefited positions. Okay. So, I'm, I'm happy to vote in favor of rescinding that hiring freeze, but I, until we get a better handle on what's happening in the city and until we, as a new council, have a better handle on budgeting, I just don't want to see any new positions created right now. So, I'm happy to rescind their freeze, but I don't want to see any new positions created. Other, these three positions that, that are a concern right now, I would say absolutely need to be, they, they need to, to move forward, but I just don't want to see any new positions created.
For clarification, council member, do you mean new full-time positions, or do you mean any position? Because we do hire a number of seasonal employees, and from time to time, the need arises.
Full-time benefits.
Right, and, and we're, right, so, for example, about sixty percent of the workforce is full-time, forty percent is part-time. We have literally sixty full-time employees and about forty that are seasonal, and we're going into that period of the year.
I think my concern right now would be full-time benefited positions. Until we get through our budgeting and have a better understanding. But, but aside from that, I would be in favor of issuing a motion to approve rescinding this without understanding that no new full-time benefited positions.
And to be further clear, every position that's referenced in this staff report is a position that has been budgeted, that are vacancies.
They've already been budgeted for this year.
Right, just to beat the horse to death.
I'd, I'd like an alternate motion to authorize filling the three positions that we're talking about and keep the fire, keep the hiring freeze for full-time employees in place until such time as we get down the budget path.
Will you accept that amendment to your motion?
Absolutely.
Okay, so that's a substituted motion? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Members up?
Please.
Because there's been a poll.
Oh, okay, okay.
We have, somebody wants to say something. Harbor master.
Can you just give clarification of what three positions those are?
Sure. So, these are referenced within the staff report. We are referring to, I believe, the mayor pro tem is referencing the recreation assistant position, the administrative assistant position within the harbor department, and the career firefighter position in the fire department, of course. The, the only comment I would add is that, you know, that there, there will be some additional vacancies coming to the city in the near-term future. One that I, it's not a secret, our, Pastor Lopez, our public works director, will be retiring in a matter of days. He was here a second ago.
He's here.
So, there he is, he's back there.
So, have we, have we budgeted that? We, we, that's in this year's budget already, though, right?
That position is in this year's budget.
So, it's not like we're going out to, we're going to budget again, right?
Okay, well, so that, that's kind of where, I just am looking to make, thank you for bringing this up, because I want to make sure, so would, would the motion be to not budget for a public works director following?
I don't think, believe that's what.
I think, I think we want to budget smart, and so we want to take these opportunities as they present themselves. Is there a way we redo it?
I see.
Shuffle cards a little bit different?
I see. And, and of course, you're going to have a, a budget study session process next month where you're going to go through everything, so this will all be very, we'll go over this a lot, but just want to make sure I understood.
But that's still in the budget.
Okay, so there was a motion?
Can I have a clarification, please?
We need clarification.
Ole?
The motion is to authorize, to keep the hiring, full-time hiring freeze in place, but to authorize filling the harbor administrative assistant, the fireman, and the recade.
So, that means we're not, we're not going to hire a full-time fireman?
It means we are.
We're going to hire a full-time fireman.
Okay. Is there a sec?
I'm going to read it.
Okay. Is there a second?
Don't roll your eyes, Karen.
Is there a second?
I second.
I second.
Okay. Vote?
All ayes.
Okay.
Good. Excellent.
Item number nine.
Right, so this item, yeah.
We'd included in that? Oh, that was the, we don't have to do it twice? Okay, general business?
Yes, okay, Mayor, you have five items this evening under general business. The first item is item number ten, which is the requested approval to purchase, actually, I see that there's a glaring typo there. It's not toe, it's two. Saltwater pump motors. What I'd like to do at this time is bring forward again Mr. JH to, to speak on this matter. This, this item is near and dear to us because we're looking for redundancy and, and safety, so Dennis can speak to this.
Evening again. As you know, a few weeks ago, you might have seen the emergency pump out on the mole sucking saltwater out, charging the system. Fortunately, councils of past had the foresight to get this pump, because without it, our, our ability to fight fires would have been at risk. The motors in the underground vault, close to the pancake cottage area in the parkway or in the walkway, those motors have failed recently. When, first one failed about three or four weeks ago, we sent it in to get rewound, and it, we put it back in place. While that was happening, the other motor failed. So, the proposal to you tonight is to purchase two new saltwater motors. It's fairly credible. You need to consider what would happen if your fire hydrants weren't completely charged, and the inability to put out a fire would be at risk. So, these new motors we're purchasing will be in harmony with our new proposed SCADA system. SCADA system has been approved by previous council members, and the motors that are being bought will be in compliance with our SCADA program. SCADA represents supervisory, control, and data acquisition. It's able to send data electronically to a main source and control and resolve a lot of issues and perhaps prevent overheating in certain aspects. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. This is a critical, critical issue. We need a little redundancy in this vault. You're going to have it with the purchase of these motors, plus you're going to be fulfilling your need for SCADA system in the future.
And where is that SCADA system located?
Well, the SCADA system is a complex system of antennas and radio transmitted data. So, I think the source would be at the treatment plant where it could be read. There's antennas, line of sight antennas, all the way to the treatment plant, from downtown all the way to the treatment plant.
You, yes, you did. If I told you some of this, you're going to have to tell me two or three times.
That's okay. That's okay. I forget myself. So, yeah, it's, it's the way of the future. Actually, SCADA's been around for a long time, and it's about time we implement it.
Do we have, is there a lifespan on these, I mean, on these motors? How long will they last? I mean, it's going to be saltwater?
Saltwater, as you know, Joe, just eats up everything.
Absolutely.
You know.
Do we have a warranty on them, and how long is it?
Yes, I don't have the specifics on them, but Enviren checked out these motors, and I, I trust their opinions. They, they're compatible. The problem is they're underground, they're susceptible to condensation, osmosis, or whatever. I, just guessing, good twenty years, easy, unless in fact they get completely submerged in water, which we don't anticipate. These are waterproof.
Okay.
But they're not submersible. So, they can't take on full, full water, to my understanding. Let's not, yeah, he's shaking, yes. So, that's the way these things are made. Submersible motors won't, won't work with the type of application we have there.
Okay, it'd just be nice to know what the warranty is on them and how accessible the extra parts are if we need them, or if they can be changed out. That's all, that would be my main concern, just make sure they're going to work. New, new technology sometimes is, is hard to rely on, but.
They're brand-new. I'm sure the warranty's good, but I don't have the info for you. Do you happen to know the? No.
Okay.
But we can get it for you.
Trust your judgment, but yeah, I'd like to see it all, all the same. Absolutely.
Sure.
Thanks, Dennis.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Stick around, Dennis.
Yeah.
Is there a motion on item?
I'm the item ten.
Okay.
Any comment? I'll second. Any comments from the public? Nope.
Okay. Thank you. Vote.
All ayes?
Okay, the reason why I was asking Dennis to stick around, because the next item on the agenda is a staff report that he wrote as well and has been researching this past weekend. If you didn't see it on your chair or on your desk, was a memo that Dennis had prepared containing four options for a new-to-us, I'm going to say, Vector truck, because we're looking at new and used trucks. We're looking at purchase and, and lease-to-own options. The Vector truck is a very important part of our sewer response system, for lack of a better description. It bails us out, if you will, in a number of ways. It's part of our ongoing maintenance. It's, it's there for emergencies. It's just extremely critical, and the one that we have currently has reached the end of its lifespan. We should be thankful that it has worked as long as it has. So, with that, I'd like to have Dennis present to you what he found this weekend in his research.
Yeah, we looked at several units. We looked at three different manufacturers, but we've studied a lot more than what we actually physically looked at. The one we're recommending to you tonight, as you'll see in your memo, is, it's called Used, however, it's got approximately only six hundred hours on the vacuum jetting portion of the machine, and eight thousand miles on this big diesel truck that carries the machine. The Vector, many of you have seen it throughout town. It's, it's white, and it's got a big drum behind it. The one we're purchasing is the same axle length, however, it's almost triple in its capacity that we're asking you to purchase tonight. It's state-of-the-art. It needs to be maintained properly. It needs to be operated by trained personnel only, and all of that, once you approve this purchase, or if you approve it, we're going to arrange for the proper personnel to be trained and advised on how to care and use the machine. We're going to, we're planning on keeping the old one as a redundant feature. I'll advise the city council that any sewer spill close to the bay is critical, especially in our position right now with the CDO. So, we've got to take that in consideration. I know it's a large purchase, and I know many of us probably might not want to spend the money, but we have to be prudent, and we have to foresee any potential problems that are going to arise. Uh, we're going to, uh, we're planning on keeping the old one as a redundant feature. I'll advise the city council that, um, uh, any sewer spill close to the, uh, the bay is critical, especially in our position right now with the CDO. So, uh, we've got to take that in consideration. I know it's a large purchase, and I know, um, uh, many of us probably might not want to spend the money, but we have to be prudent, and we have to foresee any potential problems that are going to arise.
Okay.
So, uh, your staff report, and it's itemized for you, there's four different ones that I've looked at. There's new and used. All of these specifications are incorporated there for you. Uh, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. We are recommending the, the used, uh, Vector itself. Uh, Vector is, on a better term, it's like Kleenex, when you say, hand me a Kleenex. Uh, the Vector truck is the first one that's made, so everybody calls a vacuum jetter truck and Vector truck. That's why we keep using that term.
Xerox.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, uh, any questions? Uh, any clarifications with anything?
Which, which truck is, is it, is, is it on this list here?
Number four.
It's number four?
Yes.
The Vector, okay.
Which is also the least expensive.
Okay.
Uh, we'll note that the purchase would be, um, funded over five years. So the price there is the, you know, cumulative price after five years, it's about five thousand dollars a month.
Okay. So have any of our mechanics looked at these vehicles, so we have the proper guys to come and work on it?
Yes, sir.
With the new vehicle and everything?
Uh, our mechanic Derek spent all day checking out this unit. Uh, I went, uh, Friday myself to see it, um, and, uh, was comfortable sending, uh, Derek, who went Monday, as well as a, a public works representative. They spent a considerable amount of time on it, they actually put it in use, sucked out some stuff, and, uh, did some jetting, and, uh, checked all the, uh, bells and whistles, and everything looks great.
So there's a little cross-training, so that we just don't have a Derek, we have a Derek, and a somebody else, and a
Mayor, we, we have. As a matter of fact, we're sending, uh, four, uh, public works employees there, uh, May fourteenth, if you approve it, and Environ's going to send one or two people.
Just.
Uh, it's going to be a city-owned, uh, vehicle, so the city's going to be monitoring the, uh, operations and the maintenance. And we're quite comfortable that it's had a thorough review, uh, of its integrity.
Okay.
So, that's great, as long as we have somebody here on the island when something happens.
Yeah, we're going to, we're, we're going to have several.
What I'd like to see too, with the old one,
Yes, sir.
Is that we still maintain that, and make sure that that's, with, if, and if something happened to that, the new one, if we approve it, that we still maintain and do a regular check on the old one, to make sure it's still ready to go, in case something does happen.
Yes, sir.
Instead of just sitting in the yard, and nobody started, nobody do anything. I would like to see maybe some paperwork on that, where somebody's continuing, like, you know, monthly or quarterly check, or whatever that it needs to be.
Yeah.
Just so it's up and going also.
Uh, we really need to keep that as a great idea, and that's what we had planned.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Nice, nice work.
You okay, Joe?
Yeah, that's nice work.
All right.
Dennis, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
You guys drove that truck, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a beautiful diesel.
Eight thousand miles, huh?
Eight thou, eighty-eight hundred.
Eighty-eight hundred, perfect, it's, uh, broken in there.
It's a Fruhoff, Fruhoff, uh, body chassis, and beautiful Cummings engine, beautiful.
Like that Cummings.
Yeah.
Cummings Diesel.
Yes, sir.
They, great, nice work.
Uh, thank you, is there a motion?
I have two questions.
Oh, question?
Dennis.
Dennis, don't go away. On your lease summary?
On the, on the what, sir?
On the lease summary?
Yes.
This page here?
Did I make a mistake?
It says, equipment, one new, Vector model twenty-one-ten. I don't think we're buying a new Vector model twenty-one-ten.
Uh, number four option is a used Vector model on the first page?
On the, on the lease summary, which is two pages from the back?
Oh, okay, yes, that, that is, uh, I saw that, it should be used, but it, it's new to Jules and Associates, who's, who's financing it. So, um,
The new used one?
I'm sorry, I saw that too, uh, Ole, and it is a used vehicle. You'll notice the equipment cost of two seventy-eight, seven thirty-two.
Everything J H.'s typed the word.
Correct. And thanks for pointing out my mistake.
No, this was what's his name, wasn't yours.
Get it, I, but I've That's important.
And this list, option one, and that's the only option?
Uh, op, option one?
It just says option one, capital E's with fine, that's our only option?
Yes.
So there's not another option in here, we just haven't seen yet?
No, because that's my recommendation, however, if you decided on any of these other options, uh, we could, we could use that same, uh, rental rate for any of those.
So if you wanted to pay cash for that tonight, um?
Yes. And remember, all these unfortunately, uh, include nine-and-a-half percent sales tax, which is a lot of money.
Sure it is.
City of California.
Yep.
One other suggestion, not direction right now, but this truck is also used to pump up, pump, pump aheads around town, and I don't think it's probably the best use of this nice, high, pretty complex piece of equipment. I mean, pumper trucks are a lot simpler, and maybe we could look and see if we could pick ourselves up a, a pumper truck that might be a little more affordable to extend the life of this big, heavy piece of equipment.
If, uh, city manager will allow me, uh, after my discussions with you, councilman, I, I tend to agree, and I'd like to, uh, uh, look around for some pricing and present it to the council at a future meeting. I think it might be a good idea, special events, uh, porta-potties when need be, or small little spills. I think it's a relatively minor, uh, expense in comparison to the usefulness that it can bring.
Not three hundred thousand dollars.
So, um, if you'll allow me to, I'll, we'll go ahead and present it to you in a future city council meeting.
Looking for a motion?
Any other questions?
No, questions from the audience? Okay, is there a motion?
To accept.
Second?
I second.
Okay, call for the vote?
Dave is doing really well.
All eyes?
He just scored this year.
Item twelve.
Yes, uh, mayor, item number twelve is a draft administrative policy regarding the removal of abandoned vehicles here in the city of Avalon. Um, we are bringing this policy to you, number one, to explain it, and number two, to get council's input as to a time to implement this policy. Uh, much like the vehicle noise ordinance, where we came to the council, at that time to explain it, we also were looking for when we should, uh, apply it, so that's why we're here tonight, and I'd like to ask Audra, who has prepared this and done all the work along with, uh, Captain Federall, and Kruger Toh, and others, to explain this to you, and answer any questions you may have, so thank you, Audra.
Thank you, and welcome to the new council members and mayor. So as Ben stated, uh, this, this started because we already have an ordinance on the books that handles, uh, abandoned vehicles. However, we don't have a policy, we don't have a policy in place to, um, execute the ordinance, so to speak. Um, we used to, there used to be a storage and impound yard and tow facility on the island. It, um, and it was done by Catalina Transportation, so if I'm speaking incorrectly, uh, hope that you will, uh, correct me. Um, they decided that it wasn't financially, um, viable for them to continue it. So then for a while, there was nothing being done, and then we realized that there were a lot of abandoned vehicles being squirreled away all over the place. Some of them on city property, then they would get ticketed, and then they would get mysteriously pushed on the island company property. So it, they're, they're all over, if you drive out to Pevely, if you drive up Falls Canyon, you'll, you'll see them. There was actually one, um, on Metropole, in the parallel parking, I don't know if you guys saw that one, that was completely rusted out. We don't have any way to remove those vehicles. Um, Code does the best they can do, and right now, the policy is they put a, a red tag on the vehicle, it's a cardboard tag. So you just take the tag off, and then they go and they do the exercise again. Um, a couple of years ago, maybe it was about a year and a half ago, we tried to do our own impound yard over at the Field of Dreams. There's a lot of rules and regulations that are associated with an impound yard, um, fencing, concrete, uh, how you handle the, the oil waste, um, it, it goes on and on and on. So, um, Captain Federall came to me and said, I have been, uh, approached by Kruger Toh, they're willing to partner with the city. They, uh, work with other sheriff's contract cities, Carson is one city that they, uh, they handle. They're willing to, um, take the vehicles, once we get them over there, and then they'll deal with all the regulations to scrap them, at no cost to the city. So what we were faced with was trying to come up with a way to get to that point. Um, a lot of conversations with Catalina Freight Lines, because the vehicles are already, the freight for the vehicles are paid for upfront. So that part is already handled. The part is, what do we do with these vehicles that aren't, that we can't tow? So we decided maybe a roundup might be a good way to start. So if you look at your policy, there's twenty-one long steps to get this vehicle off the island. Code enforcement, uh, Captain Federall, myself, actually did a dry run, so we could see how it worked. It seems to work well, there was a couple of questions that came up. Um, one of them was, there's people that have vehicles that are no longer in service, that they are storing on their property, because they don't have a way to get rid of them, and they're not breaking the law by pushing them onto the city street, and then letting us deal with them. So there may be, there may be a point where we'll come back to you and say, should we offer to get rid of these vehicles too, for these citizens that are following the rules, maybe for a, a minimal fee? So, basically, this is the, the rules, they're long, I don't think we need to go through all of them. The first roundup, um, Rich Coffee has offered to, uh, provide the flatbeds at no charge, so the first roundup will be free to the city, minus the staff time, to, uh, get them all together and get them off the island. So we are hoping that you, as a council, are happy with the policy that we have before you, and that you could give us a, a timeline on how soon you would like to see us, um, do this roundup. And we, um, we'll also be working with the island company. I don't, we're not going to just take them off of the city property. If the island company has identified, and they've already given us permission to ticket vehicles on their private property, so it doesn't really do us much good to just take the ones that are on city property. We'll be working with Johnny Madero and, um, the island company to include them in the whole process.
I have one little question, if you're, if the people that have been in violation aren't having to pay for that, how, if people that voluntarily want to get rid of it, why should we then charge them a small fee? I'm just
I, I agree, I, I agree. I, I just, go ahead.
Okay, good.
It's not that they don't have to pay for it, it's a matter of, if there's an abandoned vehicle, and we can find out who the owner is, then we're going to pursue whatever legal actions we can to get them to pay. The people that aren't going to be paying are, if we don't, if we can't find out who actually owns it, or if they just don't have any money, and we go ahead and, you know, you, you, it's a five-hundred-dollar bill, and they just don't have it, you could, the city makes choice if you can lean their wages on bank accounts, or you just say, we, we're beautifying the city. But to the extent that we can get reimbursed for the cost of doing this, we will.
And can I also say that, um, because I am not, um, admittedly, a vehicle aficionado, or anything, of the, the VIN numbers and all these other little things that they have to look for, people that don't want to take responsibility for their trash are really good at covering up, so that they don't have to get the fees. I didn't know they do things like scrape VIN numbers off, so that you can't trace them back, and that, and the license plates are gone. So the people that, they're, they know what they're doing, so the ones that are really obviously abandoned, they'll be very hard to trace back.
It's obvious we have to deal with this problem immediately, because there's, I, I'd say as soon as possible, bec, how many vehicles are we talking about? Hundreds?
A lot. And, and there's also full-size vehicles too. I want to, I want to, I want to stress that it's not just golf carts, there's full-size vehicles that have been abandoned, and, and Kruger Toh is willing to take all of them. I, we have a commitment to two flatbeds right now, from, um, the freight lines. So I guess I would say we would fill those up, and then maybe we would come back to you if there's a lot more, and then go, you know, maybe we'll have to budget it, maybe it'll be something that'll have to be recurring.
So did you say some, some of the vehicles, I know how, like trucks that are brought over, they're paid for when they're brought over for both ways? Golf carts are that way or not?
Yep, they are.
Okay, so the fee would cover just our handling of it?
Well, there's, okay, so
I mean, I know Rich Coffee generously, um, uh, offered to, um, tow for free, I mean, that's really
For the first two. What we would have to do is actually, we would have to lift them on with our city crews, like, lift these onto the flatbeds. So they would, they would stage the flatbeds, and then, then our employees would use the, the forklifts and lift the, the golf carts. Obviously, we wouldn't be able to do cars, lift the golf carts onto the flatbeds. Um, if we do subsequent roundups, we'll either have to pay for the flatbeds ourselves, or if we want to do smaller roundups, where we take a couple of vehicles out, then we'll be charged what's called a load-on, load-off fee for the freight line?
Absolutely.
Right, so, so they charge you to, you know, move it on and move it off, and because most of them won't be running, they'll have to forklift them in some way.
I mean, people can claim ignorance to stuff, maybe up to a certain point, but we got, we have to make them aware from this point on, that they're going to be financially responsible for their carts, because there's a lot of this going on right now, and, um, people need to understand. You know, when, if you want to have the privilege of driving a golf cart on Catalina, you got to be responsible for it while it's running, and, and all through the whole life of the cart, even the disposal of it, I mean, we have to make that
In a perfect world, I think that's very true, but, but like Audra indicated, y, you know, if somebody doesn't want their golf cart found, and they want to abandon it, they're going to scrape off any identifying marks to it. So that's the issue that the city's in right now, is these abandoned golf carts, a lot of them don't have identifying marks to them, so we don't know who they are.
From this point on, we should probably, um, find a way that we can attract these golf carts ourself as a city. If that's what we have to do, I mean, just to, just to prevent ourselves from having, to assume this, um, expense ourselves. Uh, but she's done some great work on this, and, um, I commend you for that, for sure.
Well, and I want to, one of the parts of the policy is that they're going to get that, they'll get the, the red tag, and then, if the, the, after the red tag, seventy-two hours before the vehicle is going to be, this is going to get plastered on it, these things are something similar to this, they're, they're stickers, and they're going to go on the vehicle, they're really hard to get off. So then there's going to be a glaring, you know, this thing is going away. Because we don't have any way to, um, enforce, um, tickets and things like that, Captain Federall have discussed bringing back the idea of boots. And, um, there's a boot in my office, if you'd like to come and check it out, done run it over, it's a gift, and it's still there. Um, I did call some other cities, Seal Beach is one that boots Monterey Bay, some other coastal cities, and that's a way to get your parking tickets paid that are, are, are due, and, and things like that, because we don't have a way to tow the vehicle after they've, they violated the law. We can boot them, and then, and, and, and one lady I was talking to in Monterey said, there's a shame thing involved with this big red boot on your car, and the lady called, she was so upset, and she had covered the boot with a, a plastic trash bag, because she was so embarrassed that her neighbors were going to see her vehicle booted. So it might be something that we look at in the future as a, as a, um, an effective and, and, um, and cost-effective way to get people to, to, to follow the law.
So Mr. Coffee's agreed to go at least two times?
No, two flatbeds.
Two flatbeds.
Two flatbeds, yeah.
And, and, and in this, what our, our proposal is, is that you tell us when we should start the process, and then we're going to come back and, and report, report out how it went, and then, um, you know, if we, we feel that it's probably going to be something that's going to be ongoing, then we should probably put it in our budget. Um, because I doubt we're going to ever recover, recoup all the costs that it costs us to do this. But it's going to make the town look so much better, it really is.
She will. She will.
I just have a couple of quick ones. Um, first, I, I, of all of the reports that I've read, I so appreciated this procedures list, which answered about twenty-one of my questions that I would have had. So I just wanted to say thank you for putting that in, in order of how something would actually happen.
Mm-hmm.
And so, speaking specifically to item number twenty, um, assessing a fifty-dollar administrative fee, plus the actual cost of vehicle removal, that's obviously assuming that we know who the owner is. So we know if somebody's going to abandon their vehicle and not take responsibility for it, the chances that they're actually going to pay fees are slim to none as well.
Correct.
So, um, I'm sure that you've already thought about how to ensure payments, such as, um, registration, or turning into the DMV, um, possible li, liens, I, I don't know how
If I could, we're, we're expecting that there are going to be many cases where we're not able to recoup money, and so it's going to have to be a policy decision, wherein the council has decided that it's in the benefit of the town, and it improves our quality of life, that we, as, as a community, are willing to pay for this. Because you're, you're right, we're not going to recoup on some of these vehicles, there's just There's just, people are-
But Cindy, just real quickly, if it's a vehicle that somebody is actually gonna wanna to go over town and say, "I want this golf cart back", these fees will have to be paid to the tow company, who then will reimburse them to us. So if it's actually a vehicle that somebody cares enough about to want to go and get, because they'll be, also be notified by Kruger that the vehicle's there.
Well, and before it even gets there, they're gonna have the opportunity here to have their case heard. So we've installed some safeguards, such that if it is truly an owned vehicle and somebody wants it, they're gonna have multiple opportunities to address them.
I imagine if they've abandoned it, they don't want it. I'm just saying, when we know somebody, when we have registration numbers, you know, I just want to make sure they can't just abandon this vehicle, go out next week, buy another vehi, buy another golf cart, bring it over, and get a city sticker. That, that's all I'm saying, is that I just want to prohibit those that we know. And my other question was, with regard to the fees paid upfront, yes, when you buy, or when you bring a vehicle to the island, that fee that you pay to the freight lines is considered a round-trip fee. And I just want to make sure that we're looking forward to the fact that, that the freight line company's position is changing in the next couple of years, or in 2016, I believe. And so, will that still be the case with the new freight line company?
You know, that's a really good question that I do not have the answer to. I know that the round trip on the vehicles is a sore subject. And there was a little, there was a lot of discussion about how-
If I could, I could interject real quick. I mean, the short answer is that, no, we don't have any guarantees on that. It's a different operator, and we don't, we're not entering into that contract with that operator. It's actually the island company. However, as you know, the partner is Greg Bombard, and he's very community-minded. And I would expect that we could talk to Greg about this and see what's in the art of the possible.
Okay.
Very thorough, thank you very much. This is exciting, cleanup airline. So now everybody's gonna be scurrying out and pulling parts off of old-
They already are.
They already are, they're already stripped pretty much.
Yeah, some of them are like hardly nothing left.
So I think our direction is, is thus to ask the city to move as quickly as possible.
We're looking for a timeline, so whatever the council decides, we want to know when we can start because we want people to be aware. And we would also want to provide some type of notice. We'd put up something in the paper, we'd put some flyers up, English and Spanish, so that people knew this was going to be happening. So tell us when we can start, and then that will allow us to determine the notification.
We can start as soon as possible. I don't know what, I mean, you know, you all have a workload as well, but if workload allows-
So if I could play devil's advocate, I mean, is it reasonable to say 30 days? Is it, you know, what timeline? You want to give people the opportunity, if they are well-intentioned, to take care of their issues?
I'm thinking the timeline starts just the minute you start notification, so I, you know-
When can we start that?
That's up to you all. You know when you can start notification.
How about effective July 1st?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And then we will report back to you after, I'm sure you'll probably have constituents talking.
Well, let me ask you another question of Captain Federal. Because you're gonna be involved in this process of tagging as well?
No, code enforcement will be doing all of that.
So what will the sheriff's department's role be in this initial process?
We'll help code enforcement with the process of paid work, working with Kruger Tow to make sure the process is-
Okay, I guess, and also my question is, is summer really our busiest time? And, I mean, yes, I'd like to see this thing start, but is it realistic with the sheriff's department and the city?
For us to start in the summer? No, that, that, we feel confident that we can start, absolutely. We're just, we're more wanting to be mindful of the constituents and their property.
Well, that is the process, so perfect, yeah. So is there a motion?
I just have another question.
Oh, cool.
Could we, in the notice, could we include the charges associated with having a vehicle towed and stored?
Sure.
Because I think it's-
Oh, you mean, for Kruger? Yes, yes, we can do that.
Are you looking for a motion?
Oh, just direction? Directions for a time?
Right, so I heard July 1st is a suggestion.
Correct.
If somebody's vehicle gets towed, and they decide they want to have it back, do we want them to bring it back here? We already had to take-
That's true.
I mean, should we give them the luxury of having another golf cart? If we had to babysit them the first time? Maybe we should consider like telling them, "Well, you can have your golf cart back, but we don't really want you to have it over here."
On Catalina, yeah, that's a good idea. I don't know if we're allowed to do that, though, legally.
It's true, though.
It wouldn't, if they wanted it back, then theoretically, it wouldn't be an abandoned vehicle anymore. Because this is only for abandoned vehicles.
Okay, I see.
But if it's a nuisance, if they bring it back and it's a nuisance, then we go after it as a public nuisance.
And if it's a vehicle that has been ticketed and ticketed and ticketed, and we slap the thing on that we're gonna tow it if they don't pay the tickets?
Well, no, I think that's the next conversation.
Oh, that's a whole other-
I think that'll be the next conversation. Because I know that's something else that's important. But I think maybe one, one at a time, yeah.
Perfect.
If that's alright with you.
Excellent, because I was really getting tired of looking at that one sitting down between the outwater-
You know which one I'm talking about, right?
Between the outwater and Hermosa, yeah.
It was green and rusted, yeah.
Ah, it was terrible. And it was taking up a parking spot for like months.
Okay, so July 1?
July 1, everyone?
July 1, yes.
July 1, okay, thank you.
Implementation.
Excellent. Item number 13.
Okay, yes, Mayor. Item number 13 is a request to amend the transportation permit from the Hermosa Hotel Catalina Boathouse. This is a request that was received on April 25th. It's offering to, it's offering to have added transportation to Joe Machado Field, Hamilton Cove, and Hogsback areas for hotel guests and employees free of charge year-round from 8:00 AM to dusk. As you probably know from reviewing the staff report, we are recommending denial at this time, considering that it's incomplete and that it doesn't, the application itself does not demonstrate the necessities for the request, and it does not demonstrate how the impact to traffic congestion, safety, noise, or air pollution will be mitigated. I will add that the applicant is in the audience. And if you have any questions, we'd be happy to discuss that with you.
Okay, council, do you want to make any comments?
Is the, are these electric vehicles? I, I, I don't know the, so I don't think there's pollution issue. I'm not sure, though, because so far Mark has only had electric vehicles. So that's just my question, that's all. Not a comment, question, that's all.
Is there no further discussion? Does somebody-
Make a motion?
No, we, do we need, we need to ask if anybody?
The debate comes before the motion, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I'm still learning.
Howdy, Mark Milan, Hermosa Hotel. This is about a route modification. We don't run a taxi company. If you ask any hotel operator, you'll find out that shuttling is a hassle. Scheduling vehicles, scheduling manpower, maintenance, it's just a lot of problems. But the guests love it. And we're in the hospitality business. The entire town is in business because it's a tourist area. So we want to enhance the value. We want to enhance the little mini-vacation that they get when they come over here. Nobody comes here for two weeks. They're always here for a day or two. And that's about what it shows when Wayne Griffin gives his annual report. Even non-guests, now, I don't have golf carts. My, what we call limo carts, are actually low-speed vehicles. It's a different classification of automobile in the state of California. And so they're not golf carts we're talking about. We're talking about vehicles, more like an automobile. This is a, what they call a low-speed vehicle, or neighborhood electric vehicle, which has a limit, I believe it's 35 miles an hour maximum, top speed by law, which is perfect for our streets in Catalina. People like our carts so much that people, that they don't even stay at our hotel sometimes, and they stand in front of them to have their picture taken because they're novelty, because it makes their vacation better. So we want to use our carts to make these people feel more special, our guests only. And we never charge for a ride in our cart. Sometimes at the mole, I say, "Oh, we've gotta fill the cart." And you can get to the hotel three or four minutes quicker if you just walk than if you wait till we get our other guests, who are still disembarking from the boat. But people love the little carts. On the way back from the hotel, from the boat, we might sail, going down this street, here's the lobster trap, and it's directly across the parking lot from the Hermosa. So we get to orientate the people, and it's, it's nice to start the relationship with your guests, to give them something. And we have city permission to do this. In the past, we have had quinceañera use our cart to go up to Three Palms so they could have their pictures taken, and the girls are just beautiful. And the guys are all dressed up as dutiful as you can imagine. And they go up to Three Palms, and they have their picture taken, and they're in front of the cart. This is a neat thing to be able to offer at no cost. We don't charge. We just want everybody to enjoy the community they live in. And last year, at the Catalina Air Show, we used these carts to move around the logistical people for the success of the air show. Each time, we asked the city council or the city manager for permission, and it's granted. In fact, the former city council said, "Anytime you're doing something like that, just ask. It's not a problem, just ask, we'll let you use your carts." So on Valentine's weekend of this year, we had a full-moon hike, where we brought 25 couples who had never been to the island before. Over 50 people got to hike from the garden to the sky. I even schlepped up in the hike with my old telescope and assembled it. You'd be surprised if people had never seen craters in the moon, craters on the moon, with their own eyes. They've seen them in books, but they've never seen them. And here, we were working as soon as the fog cleared, or the clouds cleared, and we got to see it. A beautiful experience. And it was a real hardship to get to this experience. On February 15th, 2014, just this year, I received an email from Ben Harvey, city manager, with a list of conditions that must be met in order to use the cart, as the prior city council said, "Just ask." Says in the beginning, "Please retain this email. I'm willing to allow this request today, Saturday, 15th, 2014, for a one-time only. I'm willing to allow this for the following reasons, and only with the following conditions outlined." And it was a couple pages of outline. I will tell you that in point 3, it says, "I am not willing, I am not willing to consider additional requests of this nature until a mechanism is developed. Developing a mechanism will be completed at the city's sole discretion, priority, and timeline." Didn't say never, it just said, "We'll get to it if we ever get to it. Until we get to it, ain't gonna happen anymore." That's what that said. Frustration, it's frustrating. And another point, point 6, I'm not gonna read all the points to you because I know we're late in the night, and you waited a long time to be able to hear this, and I would just want to get you to the high points. Point 6 says, "This is, once we finally met this list of conditions to take tourists up to the gardens at nighttime to do a hike, which we charge nothing for the hike, we charge nothing for the cart, it's just to get people addicted to our island. They'll come back again and again if they can connect with it. And hiking up and seeing the moon rise on the horizon, that, that's addictive, I'll tell you that. This is just one of the conditions." Ben writes, "You may not park the limo autoettes up at the Botanic Garden for the duration of the hike." My comment is, why not? It's not even city property. But he controls all. He says, "Instead, you must drive them, the carts, back into town for the duration that the hike is taking place. When the hikers are returning, you may drive them up to the Botanic Garden to pick them up, pick the people up, he means, and immediately bring them back to town, directly to your hotel. Additional stops along the way will not be allowed. I can't take them to the lobster trap if they want to have a couple drinks after they finish their hike. I can't tell them about going to the Coyote in case, Coyote Joe's, in case they want to hang out with a margarita and gyps. I, I gotta take them straight back to the hotel." It was draconian at best, but we agreed to it because it had been, we've been penalized even to get to this point. There's no reason for a city official to be so heavy-handed, especially if the tourists are being catered to in an effort to enhance their vacation. We didn't charge any money for the tour-led hike or for the transportation. Everyone had fun, and it was a very safe time. Our goal is to increase the value of visitors coming to the island. Therefore, we ask that the following routes be added to our existing permit. First, asterisk, geez, let's get that form so if Ben wants someone to beg for permission to use it one time, that the form is available and it can happen. The prior, Councilman Olson was there, the prior mayor says, "Just ask, it can happen." But it doesn't just happen. But I ask tonight for permission following, the following three ways, although I'd love to have that form so that anyone in the city could ask for permission to do something special. Hamilton Cove, we have permission currently to drive our limo carts to the casino. Casino, dive point, museum, it's all the same building area. We've got permission to go there. The California Coastal Commission grants all taxis and hotel shuttles and pedestrians access to the public beach at Hamilton Cove. It's a, it was a requirement before they were ever allowed to build their condominium project, that this is part of their public access, is guaranteed, mandated by the Coastal Commission on the development. And the development must let taxis and hotel shuttles and pedestrians walk down to the water. How can I get them to the Hamilton Cove gate to give them the ride down to the water if my route stops at the casino? That's why I say tonight, I would like to have the route from the casino extended to the Hamilton Cove gate. It costs you nothing, but it would allow more guests and more Californians to experience the beautiful beach at Hamilton Cove. So it doesn't hurt anyone to do this. It would just be a great thing. And we're not gonna run daily tours out there, and certainly know that it's a hassle just to meet every boat that comes in. But I don't want to violate any rules, but I certainly would love the opportunity to do what the California Coastal Commission has guaranteed me a right that I'm able to do. I just want it to be an agreement that we're gonna do it. The gardens, okay. For several years, we sponsored softball teams on the Coed League. We had the Hermosa hitters one time, I think it was a girls' league. Okay, bottom line is, we sponsor teams even when we don't sponsor teams. We have four or five employees playing in every league, every time it comes. It's a, it's a form of sponsorship to give your people the night off so they don't have to work late, so they can go play softball. Bottom line is, these are friends and family. We should be allowed to take friends and family to the ballpark. It shouldn't be a one-time special thing that we ask Ben, or that we have to ask him on a weekly basis. But it's Thursday night, we want to take our own family, our own friends, up to the park, up to the ballpark. And I would like to have that included. That's a natural thing. The third place is Hogsback. And there's many reasons why I would like to be able to drive to Hogsback, driving up to the zip line gate, as it were. First off, some guests aren't 25 years or older, so they're never gonna rent a golf cart. People don't do a 15-minute charter where they can do photos along the way for marketing purposes from the taxi company. That's an hour charter. If we sell additional zip line tickets, it's good for everybody, for the zip line, for the city, for the hotel. And probably the most important thing, if you don't let me drive up to the zip line area, how would I ever drive this vehicle onto the conservancy property where the gate is? This is a vehicle, this is an electric vehicle, but it is not a golf cart. And it can carry eight or 10 people to the gate. And maybe you want to go to the stagecoach turnaround, maybe something simple, I don't know. Geez, last thing I want to do is have my cart beat up on the road going to the airport and back. That's not of interest. But I have to be able to drive that loop, which is a one-way road, so you have to make the cycle ultimately, coming home. So I say it costs you nothing. We are licensed to do it. We have the capacity- We have the capacity. This, this, the low-speed vehicle is made for this purpose. So it just makes sense that as a team, we enhance the visitor experience. And what we're proposing does just that. We don't charge any fees, we're not a taxi company, we're a hotel company. And our job is to make the guests have the best time possible. So I ask that you modify my route today, that you allow me to go up to Hamilton Cove so that I can use the protection that is guaranteed to me by the California Coastal Commission to take people to the secret beach. I ask that you allow me to take my friends and family and coworkers, which is pretty much family anyway, over to the ballpark, up in the canyon. I don't want them riding bikes at night in the dark. And I also ask that you let me do the loop of Hogsback so that I can enter the conservancy property at the gate. Any questions?
I have a question. You can currently take them to dive, in the dive park?
Yes.
And the road past the casino is the island's company's road, is it not? From the casino to Descanso is island company. So that's, wouldn't be an issue as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, that's awesome.
Okay, okay, but then, so this is-
That's good, so that one's solved.
Okay, this is discussion. Secondly, where I dis, yeah, okay, and the zip line starts at Descanso Beach, so I don't feel so inclined for you to take them up just to see the view so then another day they'll buy a ticket. I'm just talking. And third, about going up to Joe Machado Field, your, those vehicles you're calling, the fancy name-
Low-speed vehicles.
Yes, low-speed vehicles. You say to take your family up and these are, these are supposed to be for your guests. So on that thing, I'm having a little difficulty with it as well.
Yeah, and I understand that, and I understand that. And there's the three issues.
Other comment?
I, I have two quick questions. When you're putting together marketing for your hotels and packages, do you market transportation options in your packages? Do you say that we'll pick you up and/or if you're doing the Botanic Garden evening thing that you were talking about, is that a package that you're marketing to your hotel guests?
When we did the Valentines, we sent out a special email, said, "Come hike with us." We never said anything about transportation in it. And even though, thank you for asking, even though we did two round trips with our carts, we still bought four taxis that night because we had so many people and we couldn't spend five hours positioning them. And so, but it was not included in their package. It was like, how are we gonna start hiking if we don't get them all up there at once?
My second question is, do you receive income from any sales of the zip line tours that you sale?
Yes, we do. We receive a commission.
So if you were to take people up over Hogsback with the intent of them to view this, you're essentially going to receive income from anything that they do, look from?
Well, if they don't go up there, I would receive that income if I sold the tickets as we currently do in our lobby. My goal is to get up to the conservancy gate. My goal is to get to the conservancy gate and I can't get to the conservancy gate if I can't go up Hogsback, Hogsback.
Any other comment, gentlemen, lady?
The taxi company would like to say it's a bad idea.
Connie Stewart, Catalina Transportation. So now, I don't really have much to say about what he's saying, I mean, because you all heard his reasons. I just want you to keep in mind when you're voting that you're gonna set a precedent if you vote yes, because every single hotel shuttle will come to you asking for the exact same thing. And keep in mind that not everybody's gonna be as diligent with their drivers, not everybody's going to be as diligent with the rules, not everybody's going to be paying attention to what you tell them they can and cannot do. I know that the taxi company is out there and there are things that we have issues with. I try to deal with them continually. I put my drivers through specialized training to deal with customers, to handle issues, to handle incidents that happen on a daily basis, because there are so many people and so many tourists in this town that you have to make sure that if you're going to start to do this for people or one hotel, that you enforce rules, that they need to train their drivers to deal with all of these issues, because there are a lot and there's even more in a small town where there's people that walk around and you've got the electric bicycles going everywhere. And you've got all the golf carts, all the rental ones, especially the people that don't even know how to drive them. You know, and they turn in front of you and they treat the, the street like it's Disneyland. So there's a lot of issues that you need to take into consideration when you vote for this, that, that is, if you're going to start to allow this, you need to have some rules and some guidelines for each and every place to put into place. I mean, I'm currently, just because of all the people that complain about the taxi drivers that speed or, or don't pay attention, I'm currently looking into putting in speed limiters in my taxicab so they can't actually go over a certain speed limit. So it's impossible. And I can't imagine that a lot of the hotel shuttles would be doing the same, because I know sometimes when I receive the complaints, it's not actually a taxicab, they just assume it is, it's a hotel shuttle. So I just want you to keep all of that in mind when you make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. And Michael?
Michael Ponce. Michael Ponce, 398 Wiggly Terrace Road. I am a shuttle driver for my hotel. The transportation permits were meant to get people from one location to the other, such as hotel guests to my hotel on top of the hill. It's not meant as an added perk of going around on a tour. It's supposed to be getting your guests from point A to point B, not selling them a tour, not showing them a beach. It's transportation. It's a transportation permit, it is not a tour permit. Once again, Mr. Milan is trying to get something that other people don't have and he's gonna browbeat you into it. I just wanted to come down and say that, because now I can't. But the permits are meant to, to get hotel guests from one location to another. And to give him special treatment because he just wants it, it doesn't hurt his business if he can't get them to the gate, it doesn't hurt his business if he can't get them to Descanso Beach. That's what the taxis are for. The taxicab drivers work very hard and every time you change the transportation permit to accommodate him, you're taking it away from them. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Michael. Other comments from the community? Did Dudley wanna say anything since he wrote that staff report? Did you have anything to add? No? Okay, thank you. I was gonna try to drag you out of there. Is there a motion?
Question.
I got a question too.
Well, Mr. Sampson first.
Okay, I'm curious, you were interested in shuttling people to the Botanical Gardens for an evening hike? Or is it just like an all-day thing?
No, it was, it was an evening hike. It was an evening hike.
And then, the ballpark, it was like a once-a-week thing?
Yeah, it's Thursday nights to take the, take the family and, and the coworkers.
And then, let's see, we settled the, the Hogsback, I mean, there was, you said the Hogsback, you didn't-
Well, I, you know, I can't, there's a bunch of reasons why, but the bottom line is, if I can't go up Hogsback, I can't get to the gate.
Okay, so you wanted to do that, that was an all-day, you're suggesting that you wanted to do that the whole day?
If I'm going to go out the gate, okay, I gotta be able to, to the conservancy property.
If you're gonna go out into the interior?
Yeah, I can't even go there. Even if I'm gonna drive myself to the airport, if I was gonna go out for a picnic, if I was gonna go to Hay Press to just hang out, I can't do that in my own cart because I'm not allowed to drive around Hogsback. It, it doesn't hurt anything. They, they are electric, if you wanna know. I do have two of them. And by the definition, low-speed neighborhood, low-speed vehicle has to be electric. And there are rules about the speed that you can't, the vehicle can't even be manufactured to go over 35 miles an hour or it loses its special classification. And these are registered not as golf carts, like you have golf carts. This isn't registered as a golf cart. The registration on them is LS for low-speed vehicle. So it is a unique vehicle in that California wants them to be treated like cars, but wants them not to-
I'm not absolutely certain, but I don't think it would be contested that you could go out into the interior if you wanted to do that.
The interior is controlled by the conservancy.
Right, but you get a card key-
But I gotta be able to get to the gate.
You get, you get the card key and you could do that. I'm not, I don't know if we would necessarily contest that. It's, it is the, I think what's, what we're talking about is doing tours or it's the correlation between giving people rides around and doing tours and setting a precedence, but I, I like your passion towards showing people a better experience in Avalon here. I know there's an awful lot of traffic on that road during, during the daytime, in the summertime, it's just like a, it's like a freeway up and around there. I think that, that would probably create, you know, just a little more traffic up there. But I like your idea of the, of the hikes up, up towards Hogsback and, and showing people a better experience. I just don't know, I don't wanna cross everybody else in town and give you the privilege that everybody else has, but I love what, what your thinking is on this whole thing about showing people a greater experience in Catalina, because that will bring them back for sure.
This is your chance to vote the way that you feel, which is to let us have minor modifications here. We've already talked about one of them, not even needing a modification to the transportation because it goes through island company property. I just need their permission to go up to Hamilton Cove. That's, that's one thing. So really, we're just talking about permission to get to, up Hogsback so we can get to the interior road. And then the other thing that I'm asking for is the opportunity to go out to the ballpark, go up the canyon, because, really? I mean, I, I, I just think that it would be obvious that everyone would go, geez, you're taking your family and your teammates over at the office up to the ballpark for the night. Who cares? They're not taking taxis. Okay? It hasn't, this year, they haven't taken a taxi one time and we've had five people on two different leagues. So it's not like we're cutting into anyone's money. This is just an opportunity to, to be supportive and that's the way we're supportive. And I just ask for your help in delivering a, a, a good time to the tourists and to take care of my family and my employees.
I'm sorry. And both of his, both of your vehicles are considered commercial vehicles?
Yes, commercial because they have to park off the street at night.
Okay.
Question for Ben. No, not for Ben, for Scott. Transportation permits cover all the roads in the city of Avalon, whether they're owned by the city or by the island company?
Actually, they cover public transportation, which is defined as the operation of any vehicle which transports passengers over city streets for the purpose of providing and making available to the general public an alternative to the use of private vehicles. So if you are transporting people over a public street, you need a transportation permit. Destination is irrelevant under the way it's defined here. If you're operating on a public street, you need a public transportation permit.
So if you, if you take Hogsback, Hogsback is a private road from the banana trees, a public road up to the banana trees, so you would need to have banana trees in your transportation permit.
Where are those banana trees?
Technically, a strict reading of the municipal code is, is if you're, if you're on your way to the banana trees or to the conservancy or island company property, if you are operating your vehicle and you're transporting passengers over city streets, you need a transportation permit. It's the operation on city streets that triggers a requirement of a transportation permit, not necessarily the location. However, you can take that into account. For instance, if you could say, well, the majority of the travel's gonna be off of city streets, so we think it's fine to grant the permit. Again, it's, it's up to, it's up to you. I think just from, you know, the, the, I think the staff's recommendation was that the applicant had not shown on its application, that the standards of the municipal code had met. You can decide tonight that he has, or you can, and then, and then grant the permit. You can decide, no, we're still not there, please provide more information. The other thing that came up is that you are allowed, if you grant the permit, to provide conditions on the issuance of the permit. That's one of the things that the municipal code provides, is that you can grant the permit, but you can't put conditions reasonably, reasonably related to that permit. So you can't condition it, for instance, driving with certain hours, certain, you know, days of the week.
Can and not?
Can, can.
Oh, you can, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Well, that's what, that, that's what I really liked about it was about the, the trip up to the Botanical Gardens was, it was in the evening and it's a nice time of the night to be up there and it's also a great experience. I think, I, I believe that it would be a good idea if we did this, that you would do the same for Hogsback, because it's such a heavily traveled road, that if you did early mornings, late evenings, you'd have a better experience for your people and we'd have less traffic up in those areas, because it's really congested right now. That is if you get the blessing from the other councilmen that-
I, I'm just having trouble making the affirmative findings on three, four and five, which talk about congestion.
Scott, can I ask you for clarification, Scott?
Yes.
On the first page of our staff report, section 5-14.02, says, "No person shall operate or cause to be operated within the city, any vehicle."
Right.
And all of that, whether it's Hogsback or anywhere else, it's all within the city of Avalon.
Yeah, it says that, but then it asks us, "Without first obtaining a public transportation permit," and then, "Public transportation is defined as operation of any vehicle which transports passengers over city streets." So, for instance, if your business consisted of 100% traveling on private streets, that's not public transportation, because you're not operating on a public street. But because you're at least partially operating on a public street, that's what triggers the requirement for a, a public transportation permit. But again, you can, in considering the extent of that permit, to consider if the majority or a substantial portion of that is outside of, is not on city streets, but still within the city, you can still condition that permit. Grant it, deny it?
Okay, and let me ask another question. I might not have caught this. Can those low something vehicles go into the interior? Can you get a gate key and take that in there?
I haven't got the gate key because I haven't gone up there. I believe that I'd be able to, because they asked that the speed be 25 miles an hour or less on those roads, which our machines are capable of, and they aren't golf carts, which is something they frown on, because they don't wanna be littered with golf carts. So I'm thinking that with 100% probability that the conservancy would say yes to us driving there. We already have another vehicle that can go there and has met the insurance requirements and the drivers are approved and, and all of those things. So I, I don't see a stumbling block, if I can get to the gate, of being able to go in.
I think the braking is the issue out there, the braking system.
And we have regenerative braking on our vehicles, which mean when they go down the hill, they actually charge the battery back up. It's not a one-for-one. What I'm saying is that you get about 35% of the energy you spent going up the hill being transferred back into the batteries. And so the braking on these vehicles is actually superb, much better than an automobile, because it not only saves energy, but it, it is like a governor on the speed.
Mark, just one question. I'm just trying to kick this around. The last time you came up to us and we gave you permission to go out to the dive park area, and where else was that?
Well, I, I thought that I needed permission to go to the heliport, but they said automatically, no, you can go to the heliport because it's a-
And then we gave you permission to go out to the casino, correct?
The casino, so I got permission to go to the casino last time, yes.
So to me, that's, you know, we gave everybody else, because everybody else gets to do that, correct? Some of the other hotels get to go out that area?
Some of the other hotels have required those. There are hotels operating shuttle services that don't even have transportation permits. I'm just trying to do it the right way.
What I'm getting at is, is here we give an inch-
Yes.
And here we come back, we're gonna take advantage of more of it. Here, you get an inch here, you're gonna take another mile here. Right now, if I had to vote for this, and I might, I, I wouldn't vote for it.
I understand what you're saying, councilman, and, and-
That's just my opinion. I think, because everybody else did this and you got permission for that, and now it seems to me you're coming for a little more for your, for your enterprise.
You know, you're, you're absolutely right. You're absolutely right. We keep evolving as far as what services that we get to offer guests and what do guests really want and what makes them put- guests really want, and what makes them put Catalina on their Facebook and their Twitter. And we're all about driving. I would say hands down, anytime I would bet, we bring more virgin travelers, meaning those not having been to Catalina before, to this island than any other hotel operator does. And so if the island company has a bigger budget than they do, they would be the only one. But we have the rooms, and we fill them constantly by doing innovative discounted marketing. And our goal is to get as many people addicted to the island as we can. We just wanted a little bit of assistance from you guys. And nothing costs any money for the city. There's no downer, there's no loss, no risk.
I guess I just have one other little concern is, I mean, it is opening the floodgates for everyone else. And so I'm concerned of how, and I'm studies and all that stuff, I know, Mark, and time, I, you know, I, it's just much as a bother to me that things take, and it's just as much a bother that we can't do anything in groups of two or three to make solutions, you know, but it has to be all discussed here. But the steady part of it would be everybody that currently has a transportation permit now coming forward and saying, the Hermosa has it, so we want it. So now we've got the other ones, and I just don't, I don't want to say impact, but I'm curious, the impact and what that means to, with everybody else coming forward.
Is that what we're doing? Are we creating a green light for everybody else if we make a decision?
If I could, then that's...
Is there a way we could take each case one at a time, and if somebody else comes up, we make definitions, certain definitions for that particular group or hotel or business?
That's exactly what you're doing. Every person that comes in has to ask the council for a transportation permit, or if they have one right now and they want it amended, they have to come and ask your permission. It's a public hearing, and you can put conditions on any modifications to their permits. But I will advise you again that we should be treating everyone the same unless there are special circumstances with each property. But, you know, again, it is precedent setting, so, you know, it's, the rules apply, cross aboard.
And I have to say, this all goes back to what you were discussing earlier with the abandoned golf carts. We decide we want to live here. We live here for a reason. We live here because it's a simpler way of life. We don't want all the traffic, all the issues of the mainland being over here. So there are rules and regulations that we have to live with to accommodate that. And it just seems that some people come to the island and decide they don't like our rules, so they're going to make their own, or they're going to beat our rules to a pulp until they get what they want. And it just seems that this is the history of the Hermosa. So I just, so I just, I just want to say, I just, and once again, my name is Michael, I just want to say that we choose to live here. We live by these rules. These are the rules that govern us, and we should stick by those rules. We're always talking about impact on quality of life. This is an impact in that you're adding somebody running around all over town now. So I, we have to be consistent in what we talk about. So if we're talking about abandoned golf carts being a nuisance and affecting quality of life, more vehicles running around town also impact.
Thank you. So if we did approve this, and then to a certain, eventually, to a certain extent, I'm not saying that right now that I would, because I just don't feel that the variables are complete enough for me to say okay. But also, if we did, and somebody, and somebody else came up and wanted the same thing, and we didn't give it to them, can they sue us?
Well, you'd have to, if you denied it, if someone else asked for the same thing and you denied it, you'd have to have a factual reason why you are making a distinction between that one, that request and granting the Hermosa. And it may, you may be able to make it depending upon the individual facts, but you subject yourself to that challenge.
How many hotels do we have, like 36, 40, somewhere around there, right? 32, okay.
Well, we counted 18 hotels that had over four rooms. 18. We're not talking about people who rent out the back room or they're upstairs as a conditional use permit. We're talking about there were 18 hotels, but really easy condition on this. It has to be a low-speed vehicle, non-polluting, electric vehicle that you give these permissions to. And if someone else takes their smog, oil-burning Aerostar off the road and brings an electric vehicle, then why not give them a spiff? Why not treat them nice? But you're not opening this up to everybody because everybody doesn't have a neighborhood electrical, electric vehicle. Everybody doesn't have a non-polluting vehicle. And most of these hotels have either vehicles that wouldn't qualify or gas-powered vehicles. So there is a limitation right there to say, hey, you're doing a non-polluting, you're doing a silent, nearly silent, electric vehicle, and then make that be your precedence, and let someone else get one of these stinky Aerostars or big vans off the road, and let them replace it with something cute that tourists want to take their picture in front of, and then let them drive around an extra Hogback loop. Who cares? It doesn't impact anything, it just makes the island better. And that's what I'm trying to do here tonight.
Just real quick, where, how do you, where do you charge your vehicles?
I have one charging spot at the Catalina boathouse and one charge, one place behind the Hermosa Hotel.
Okay. I'm looking at the findings that we need to make to grant the permit, and I'm still not convinced that we can make those findings. And one of the biggest ones is the congestion, especially going over Three Palms. Three Palms already is a traffic jam to begin with, because, not Three Palms, Hogback, because you've got all the people up there watching the zip line. Very popular thing to look at, but you drive by there, and you've got six golf carts and people weaving in and out. I'm just, did you, are you aware of the findings that we need to make?
Yes, and I'm aware that they can be easily observed and decided on. I like the idea about congestion. It's so nebulous, what is congestion? And I understand that people who are taking pictures of the zip line and don't pull off the road over onto the shoulder, plug the road. I get that. And is that congestion? Yeah, or is that just bad driving? Yeah, I don't know. But I understand what you're looking at, and what I see is there are, if I don't have permission to get to the gate, then I can never go to the conservancy. If, now that I've got permission to go to the casino, then it's the island company that would let me get up to Hamilton Cove. And we're talking a safety issue with my family, going with my daughter, with my employees, going at nighttime to the softball game. I don't even know why that wouldn't automatically be allowed to anybody who was going to offer a free ride to someone going up that dark canyon at night. Anyone who offers a ride to someone else, oh, and they do. People do drive golf carts down the canyon and go, hey, you want a ride? And my guests tell me, these are the greatest people on this island, because I don't even know these people, and they picked me up. So it's happening all the time. I'm just trying to do something legally so that I don't have a problem down the road with someone telling me I violated my permission. And so I would like to be able to go to the softball game, and if I do a moonlight hike three times a year or four times a year, it's not nightly. And you've got to do it when the full moon is on a weekend, because no one's going to the full moon hike on a Wednesday. And the weirdest thing about the moon, until you do these things and schedule them, you don't know that the full moon is on Wednesday. The next night, the full moon is 45 minutes later, and then 45, by the time you get to Saturday, the moon's not coming up till 10:30. I'm not starting a hike at 10:30, I'm sleeping by 10:30. So it's not every month that even works with a full moon hike. But if I did it three or four times a year, there's no penalty, there's no harm. And if I do take 20 people and I hire the taxi for the other 20 or 30, that, I'm not charging anything for it, so I'm going out of money, out of pocket, buying the taxis or renting them, let me drive up a couple taxi loads myself. And it's not a, it's not anything bad for the city, it's actually good for the city because my goal is to provide safe transportation for my family and my coworkers, and also inexpensive, awesome time for people who come to our island.
I'll wait till the motion comes, and then I'll make my comments.
With the commercial vehicle permit, are people allowed to use it for private use?
Not if they're transporting the public, no. They have to get a public transportation permit.
Okay.
He has a public transportation permit right now.
Okay.
For operating. That permit though is limited to certain stops. And so his request is, frankly, I think it's, rather than, we've given him some special permissions for like single events, and I think the gist of it is, is that what he'd like to do is get a permit, rather than coming for special events every once in a while, these are locations that I think I'd like to regularly offer my guests without having to come back and going through the city manager or the city council for each request. And again, the municipal code provides that the council is, you have the right to issue a permit, and to modify the permit that he has right now to allow him this, to this expanded use of his permit.
Can we go to the extent of saying we could do this on a temporary basis?
You can.
And define this, define what we're doing here a little more, because we're talking about four different locations here. There's only one of them that I really...
There's more than four locations.
Okay.
Anywhere in town is what he's asking for.
No, 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 not anywhere in town. I've been told that not anywhere in town would never be granted.
See, that's where I want to redefine.
So I've asked for specific designated areas, the ballpark, the gardens, that's all the canyon, okay, and Hogback. Those are two things, I'm looking, the canyon and Hogback.
But you, and in the past, in the past, the city council has issued a permit for a six-month trial period to see how it works. And so your permit is only good with this expanded use for six months, and then you come back to the council, and it's up for renewal then at that time. And then the normal procedure works that once you have a transportation permit that's issued by the council, you, it's renewed three years by the vehicle clerk if things haven't changed.
I'd like to see it, to see what it does. I couldn't say no way we could do this. I'd like to do the temporary thing on the canyon maybe. I mean, I would consider it up this canyon because just for the trial basis, it's such a temporary, it's such an odd, a spotty thing anyways. We're talking about full moons, and we're talking about Thursday nights for transportation up to Joe Moschato Field, which is somewhere we want people to go to anyways to enjoy the recreation in Avalon. The other places, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to confuse the issue for this because I would like to see how the community reacts to this. And we've also, we've already got some reaction to it. But Catalina's a beautiful place, and I don't want to deny people of enjoying it, but at the same time, I'm just, I'm just keeping an open mind about this. And the reason is, there's not a lot of traffic up in that area, and we're not talking about tourism to the point to where it's going to congest anything. We're talking about full moon nights for a temporary basis. And I don't think it was out of reason for, I don't know for what reason Ben wanted you to come back down, take the vehicle back down into town. But for the most part, if there's a good reason for that, I'd like to know what it is and maybe attach that on, but I...
If I could, I just, I think that's something that's been bothering me throughout this discussion, and sorry to interrupt you, Councilman.
No, don't be.
He's referencing a one-off request that he made that came to me in the 11th hour where I was obligated to make some type of framework for a permit. And so in an abundance of caution, I developed something that we could constrain this request upon. This was not, this was presented to me with very little time to respond, and I do recall, and I think that the mayor pro tem and Councilman Hernandez will remember this, I had to reach out to council members on a Saturday to discuss this, and it was hastily thrown together, and I was forced to make a determination on a moment's notice. And so just trying to not have something that was unwieldy, that was unfair to the people, I developed some tight constraints on it, admittedly. But again, this was something, you know, that was hastily rushed through at best. And it's an unfair and inaccurate characterization of the whole episode that was described.
I think, I'll go ahead and just throw my comments out. I'm still learning when we are to have conversation and when public comment is closed and all of that, so I apologize for that. Okay. First and foremost, I agree that Mr. Milan hasn't proven the findings for items three, four, and five. The second concern that I have is I'm very worried about setting a precedent, which is something that I stand behind for my last six years as a planning commissioner as well. I do not want to set a precedent for something that I feel could be negatively impacted to the people of the city. Mr. Milan just indicated that there were only 18 hotels. I very quickly looked at the Chambers website, and which lists only Chamber members, and there are 29 hoteliers, including a cup, including two or three, or five actual that are also listed in the bed and breakfast, but let's be fair and say they're hoteliers. It does not include vacation rental companies, which I would imagine would thus have the right to come and ask for a transportation permit themselves as well. So the precedent I'm very concerned for, I'm not interested in seeing 29 hoteliers, I know that's a gross overstatement, but I'm not interested in seeing 29 hoteliers having their own forms of transportation going all over the town. That I think goes against what we're trying to do. And third, I feel as though this is a little bit of nickel and diming the council for, you know, initially coming for a transportation permit, coming back for an amendment, which I thought about this throughout the day today, and Mr. Milan is one of, one of two main hoteliers in town who really do a great job of catering to the divers. They are, they are the top two hotels that provide services that other hotels simply can't, or it's not their forte. So when I thought about the amendment, when he came back to the council, I thought, okay, that makes perfect sense to me. Go to the casino because you're really trying to service a majority of your clientele, which is, which is the divers. Okay, fine. Now we're back for another amendment, which is to go to other areas. And so I just am uncomfortable extending this transportation permit any further because now it's not really a transportation permit anymore. Now he's becoming a taxi for his hotels without charging for it. Okay? And my final point is, last week when we had our priority study session amongst the council members, I would just like to remind everybody that I respectfully requested as item number three that I was personally able to throw out, I would like to see a comprehensive transportation review of the city. This includes an overview of all of the transportation, how transportation works in the town, how our permits work, how our oversized permits work, commercial, residential, everything. That is something that I'm very concerned about. That particular transportation review, for me, will answer probably no less than 50 different items that will come before the council. So those are the top four reasons right now why I would not be in favor of moving forward to allow this amendment at this time.
There's a lot of questions that are incomplete here for me too, that I would like to know. Like I said, I like the spirit of the whole thing. I like the way you love the town and you're trying to make it better, for sure. But I think we do need to have an overview of our whole transportation situation in Avalon. And I think it would only be fair, and I don't want to see the city have any more beefs with conflicts of interest with everybody else wanting something that somebody else got, and I think we have enough of that. It's like a food fight sometimes, and we can avoid it by maybe having some clarity here as to, like Cindy just, she explained it really well, and I can't do it as well as she does, but I like the way she explained it. I, I like the way she explained what we really need to do as a, as a city. And I think, I just don't think we're quite ready to make a decision like this tonight, but, my hat's off to you.
Is there, is there?
No.
Okay. Do we want to give direction staff?
Well, it's a motion. You need a motion to either approve or deny.
If we disapprove, he can refile this when?
I, I, well, if you disapprove pursuant to the staff report, which is, the application is incomplete, that he can file an amended application quickly with, with the information.
You know what? I'm gonna give you my word now. If you say that this is not good, then you won't see me before September on this issue. Uh, it's not like I'm gonna come back next week. I'm not gonna pay another eight hundred and forty-two dollars to appeal this. It's like, if, this is just common sense. Can I drive my family, my coworkers to the ballpark? Can I take some tourists to the, to the Botanic Gardens? If that's not good for you, then vote no, and just say no, Mark. You don't get squat. If, if, it's, it's as easy as that, because the bottom line is, we're not precedent-ing anything. You're talking about a low-speed vehicle. Go tell any other hotel to get a low-speed vehicle, and you'll give them a favor too. Because what you're doing then is making it be not a speeding vehicle, and not a gas-burning vehicle. So, there's a lot of things about it. And, you know, like, my, my dear friend, my fellow swimmer, Scott Nelson, sat up there, and we were talking about parking on my property six years ago. And he said, you know, I just need a month to figure out this thing about parking. I'm not ready to vote on whether or not you should be allowed to park on your own property. And I swear to you, to this day, the issue's not resolved because we're thinking of things, and what I really was expecting is action. Do this with this limitation, do that with that limitation. Let's go get it. Let's go, team. Not, but I understand what you're saying, and if you decide no, then it's no. It's okay. You decide what is best. I don't think you're starting a precedence. I don't think that you're bankrupting the taxi company. I don't think we're nickel and diming things. I think that we see a new need, we see a new opportunity, we see a, a way to make everything better. It doesn't hurt anybody. It's not adding additional construction, it's not adding, uh, new vehicles. So, I want you to know, if you vote no, then I understand. It's no. Tough luck, Mark. But I, please, don't have a meeting to have a meeting to have a meeting. We went through a transportation stuff, Scott and I, for a year that isn't resolved yet. But for a year, we had public meetings and talks about different vehicles. So, vote your conscience. Do you have a right to drive your family to the ballgame? Should I? Do you, can you take one of your coworkers to the ballgame? Then should I? If, if you don't think you got the right to put your family in your cart and go up there, don't. Oh, should, oh, should I bring back another cart to the island to add to congestion just to be able to go to the ballpark on, on softball night? That's adding to congestion. I've got the golf cart, you seen it, it's got the flames. It's all remodeled, it's ready to come back. Okay? The thing is, I haven't brought it back because of congestion, because I'm trying to do the right thing. So, please, just, I know, you guys are taxed, it's the end of the night, you still got more stuff to do. If you think that I shouldn't be allowed to drive up to Hogsback so that I can go onto the, to the property of, uh, of the conservancy, then say no, Mark, you don't get to drive square. Nothing. It's done. But, I'm not gonna, Scott, I won't be back. I'm not gonna pay eight hundred and forty-two dollars to appeal your decision tonight. I understand what you're doing, and I hope that you can see what I'm doing, and that we're able to make this work. But if we're not, we're not. I just come tonight for that, but you guys are laboring way too hard on something that's way too simple, and it doesn't mean traffic impacted studies for the next two years to figure. In two years, you'll have forty-eight new units up in the canyon with forty-eight new cars, with low income that's being built with city money. In two years, you'll have a hundred lots up by the golf course that the island company's gonna put in for their custom homes. In two years, you're gonna have so much tra- and you're thinking about a golf car. One silly little electric limo going up Hogsback, and you're talking about it. You haven't even talked about the real problem. So if I'm a problem, just vote no, and I'll go away. It's good. Don't worry. It's good. Thank you very much for your time tonight, and I appreciate all of your attention. And you guys are thinking so hard on this, and it's not that hard of a question. So, I just want to thank you very much, and I appreciate your time and energy this evening.
That being said, move staff?
I made the motion.
I'll second it, to uphold staff's recommendation.
So, is...
So, we're gonna vote now, unless you want to have further discussion?
Um, I'd like to be a little more clear. Yeah, yeah, a little more discussion. I just want to know, um, I just want Mr. Milan to know, no, we're not thinking too hard on this. Um, there's a complex issue here. It involves every hotel in town, okay? It's not just you, sir. I've tried to sell, tell you that I like your ideas, okay? Um, I want to see him work some way, okay? I said I'm okay with you going up on full moons to, um, take some people up on a little hike. I'm okay with you taking your family up to the ballgames. But you keep throwing in, well, I just want to go out in the interior. I just want to go around Hogsback. I just want to go out to see the zip line. It is a little more complicated. We, we, like I said before, it needs to be defined a little more, okay? And I'm sorry this costs you money i- if you have to, um, come back and, and reapply for this, but it's something that, um, I think it's a good idea. I like the idea of going to, um, I, I, like I just stated, I, I, I like that. Period. Those are what I do like.
Take a motion that I'd be allowed to do that, and let's parse out that part, and then see if we can...
Okay, I like that. And I, I, I wouldn't mind doing that. I, I enjoy that, uh, that motion. So, I can do, is it possible?
Well, there's already a motion and a second to move staff report, which is deny, to which is to deny this request because of the lack of information, um, presented. So that's what the motion pending for.
That's what the motion is? All right. Well, then it stands.
So, and I'm sorry that I did my newness. And so, then because of lack of findings or lack of whatever, then what?
Well, then the motion is denied, and then he has the ability to submit an application with the information in terms of, to satisfy the other factors. He has the opportunity if he wants to.
So, in a simpler way, would, just to say, another thing would be not to move a staff recommendation, but to just deny the thing altogether?
You could do that.
I mean, I'm just wondering.
Well, that, that is a possibility. Um, that would, though, you could say that because he's provided all the information that tonight, to satisfy the other conditions, based upon everything he's presented tonight, that you can deny, deny the motion. Um, because you find that even with all the information presented, you still cannot make those findings, and that there's no additional information, um, that he could present that would cha- change your opinion. But right now, the motion is to deny the request for the basis that the information presented was not sufficient to, was not enough to make a determination that all the factors in the municipal code could be satisfied. Doesn't mean, it's, it's basically without prejudice. He can, he can make it again if he, uh, sharpens his pencil, uh, perhaps, you know, brings more, more information, uh, to you.
I'd like to see that.
That's what the motion is.
The motion is.
Incomplete application.
Even though he says he's not gonna come back.
Right.
But that's, that's not our...
But he still can if he'd like to.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. I'd like to keep that door open because I like a lot of elements that he's talking about. Uh, some of the elements, the arrest are incomplete for me.
So, there's a motion, Denise, which is to...
Call for a vote.
Go with staff report. Okay?
We have a first and a second, so let's have a vote.
Okay.
What?
Mister Councilmember Sampson hasn't voted yet.
Oh, okay. So, we're voting on what we just discussed, um...
Yes, which is, which is that, which is that there's not enough information to make a finding. He can come back and ask for it. And then, we've, so, that's the motion.
All ayes.
Item number fourteen.
Yes, uh, item number fourteen, um, is, presented chapters from April, excuse me.
No, it's okay, it's okay. I can wait.
Okay.
What, what's that now?
We're just thinking, maybe taking a restroom break.
Oh, we can certainly, sure.
No.
Mayor?
No. Do you need more?
Two minutes.
Two-minute restroom break.
Okay. Sorry, ladies and gentlemen, we're taking a break.
Well, we've been here for two and a half hours.
Brian's still here.
And item number fourteen?
Yes, I think the city attorney is going to deliver a brief staff report on selected chapters for what we hope to be an Avalon City Council Policies Manual. We've got two available for your review this evening. Scott, would you like to discuss this item?
Yes, at the request of the Mayor Pro Tem at the last meeting, to develop a, uh, city council policy manual, we have, uh, taken some policies from, um, some of the other public entities that we represent, and we're gonna be presenting these to you in piecemeal rather than the whole manual, um, the whole thick manual all at once. And so, we thought we'd start with, uh, two that are in the middle of our manual, which is basically communication roles of the city council and city staff. Basically, talks about, uh, the decorum that the council has at council meetings among, um, each other, as well as, uh, discussion about, uh, the city council slash city manager form of government, which basically provides that the city council provides the general, uh, policy and direction of the city, and then is up to the staff led by the city manager to execute those policies. Um, and so, that's the first of policies. And the second policy is a really supplement to the Brown Act, and it basically just talks about the type of motions that can be made at a council meeting. And it also discusses the fact that in most actions, you need three votes, um, to take any action. There are some limited matters where if you have a quorum of only three people, that if it's only three people, that two people, um, can, uh, vote on things. But for most things, like spending money, entering into contracts, entering into resolute, into, um, ordinances, it takes three votes. And so, we've kind of discussed what happens if it's a two-to-two tie, et cetera, et cetera. So, these are, um, I wouldn't say boilerplate, but they've been a little adjusted for Avalon. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about the, uh, policies.
No, I just know, you know, especially those of us are new are very anxious about doing things and, you know, and, and it's really tough to kind of want to hop in there and just jump in there and do stuff. And so, it's a nice review of, you know, yeah, don't go running out and telling pastor, Gina, or, or Brian out there, um, what to do and what needs to be done. So that's a nice, real nice reminder of that.
And as a follow-up to, to, to this, and, and you are required by the state of California to have ethics training, um, as are all the department heads. And so, again, Parrish Knox from my office has, he teaches ethics training. He's gonna come out to, uh, Avalon, do the glass-bottom boat, um, other things. He's not gonna charge for it because he, he, you know, he wants to come. And so, we'd like to schedule an ethics training as quickly as possible. You have to get it done by the end of this year, but again, because we have three new council people, and, and what the ethics training covers is, it's not just, um, conflicts of interest. It is, uh, Brown Act, it is Public Records Act, it is public, uh, contracting. Um, it's basically an overview of, uh, municipal law, um, that the state of California list about fifteen different things that you, you have to have this training for. And it has to be two hours long. And so, since you have to do it by the end of this year, we thought, let's get it done as quickly as possible. So, if there's some dates you want to, uh, you know, discuss tonight, um, I've got Parrish's schedule here, and after May nineteenth, he's pretty much open, and perhaps you may want to consider having it on the alternative Tuesday night. Um, and that way, he could do it in the day for city staff that can't make it at night, and then, and then have a second training, um, for, uh, for, for you, or he could, you could come during the day. Again, it's, whenever it works for your schedule, um, we find that it's best to do it with, um, a live presentation, because after that, then you, you may have a lot of questions that you may want to ask. Whereas if you do it at the league, has the website, you just read for two hours, and you don't get to ask any questions. So again, pretty much after May nineteenth, um, he's available. If you want to look at your calendars and give me some dates, we can schedule it.
I know my May is booked. So if we can, can we wait till June?
Fourth of July.
Fourth of July, that'd be a good time. I mean...
June is available for Parrish, everything except June fifth and June tenth.
So if we could look at our calendars for June, that would be, that would be helpful for me anyway.
What about doing it on the day of a regular council meeting? Start it earlier.
We could do that, if you want to.
Okay.
We could start it at four o'clock, if that works with your schedules.
I mean, those are regularly scheduled days we would be here, so it just means a...
I have to check what I have going earlier than that. I'm just not sure of my, even my council dates prior, before six o'clock. So...
I'm available.
So, if we can check, we've only got one, so check, we've only got one more meeting in May, so, and it seems like...
Commander, June.
Oh, so you're thinking we can move to June. I thought you were trying to get it. Okay.
We can do the first, if you want to do it on the council night, we could do it first or third meeting. You tell me which one, and he'll be here.
Well, let's try for the first meeting in June, and we can get back with you tomorrow if we can't make it.
Right, okay. That'd be four o'clock, or if you want to have it again at six. Well, no, I think, I think, I think we want to have, right, because we're out in the middle of budget times then, so I think it makes sense.
Is, uh, I just gotta throw out there, is there any reason why we couldn't do this during the day, or actually, we need to include the planning commissioners and probably some staff as well?
Yes, yes, you need to, yeah, the planning commission and then, uh, department heads. Anyone that files a Form 700 is required to take this training. So, that's why we could do two, you know?
I mean, or even do it during the day, and then, you know, have the few hours in between to come back for the council meeting that night. Just as an option.
I kinda like that myself. Is this calendar year or fiscal year we have to have it done by?
Calendar year.
Calendar.
Oh, so we've got six more, you have six more months to go.
You have six more months to go, but again, because you have a, you...
Yeah.
Is this, isn't this every two years?
Every two years you do it.
Every two years, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, this is, yeah.
This is our fourth one, hopefully.
Well, if we schedule for the third, we have a session during the day, and then we have a session in the late, late afternoon, and then we have the council meeting. If you want to go to the earlier session, you can go there, take some time off. Sounds good.
Okay.
You got options?
Okay.
All right, so I'll have Parrish be here, uh, to do that.
And we're gonna go back to item number fourteen, I hope.
Yes, of course. Thank you.
So, what, what did we decide? Uh, the third of May?
The third of May, and we're gonna have...
Third of June.
Third of June, we'll, we'll have two sessions, uh, one in the day, and then one right before the council meeting.
No time set, no time set yet?
Uh, four, well, wait...
Well, one of four. Should be a little before four.
Maybe three-thirty.
Three-thirty.
Three-thirty, you give a half-hour break, and then, um, he'll take the ten o'clock boat, so let's say eleven-thirty. Uh, does that give him time to do the glass-bottom boat? Yes, it does.
This is called an ethics?
And it's called, uh, it's called AB one, two, three, four training.
Okay. Thank you.
If you wanted to go back, let's come back, go back to this.
I want to go back to item number fourteen. Um, okay, so, as probably expected, I have a few things on, on this. Um, several very small changes, such as replacing words, that I feel would be more professional or more appropriate for this. Um, we could go through them individually, or if it's, if we're so agreeing, I can just... We could go through them individually, or if it's, if we're so agreeing, I can just work with Denise or Ben or whoever directly and give them those changes. The two that I definitely want to make sure that are discussed openly here, one, I'd like to see a section added in here, potentially five point one point two, that actually explains how we are as a council, that simply states we are a council of five equal members, the position of the mayor pro tem is, the position of the mayor is, and, and how, how we work together, so to speak. I think that would be a benefit for, you know, anybody going forward. I, I mean, we understand it now, but going forward, so that we understand that we're, we're essentially a group of five working as a team of one. And, and I, I just want to see that stated in here, so it's clear. And the other one that was really important to me is that I would not like to see this be an ongoing project over the next year. So, I'm really hoping to push forward, to have these chapters to us, so that we can have some sort of final copy before the end of July. I don't think it's too much to read, I don't think it's too much task loading, we've worked with, we, meaning the city, has worked with boilerplate of prior ones, so I just don't feel as though this, that would be too much to ask to have a final, have this finalized before July.
I think there are nine, maybe there's nine or ten chapters total, so we could easily do that.
Okay. Does that sound good, counsel?
It sounds great. So, we're going to discuss two chapters of meaning for the next five meetings, and at the sixth meeting, we'll adopt the entire volume?
Correct. And what we can do though is, I can, we'll, we'll, we'll work on a five point one point two, we'll work with the council member on any of the language changes she has, and we can just provide that to you at the next meeting. So, or, once we're done with it, so you have that, so that when we adopt the rules as a whole, we're not, for the first time, seeing any changes that we've made along the way.
Right, okay. Did you have anything else missing?
Nope.
Okay.
Does that have any direction?
Yes.
Okay, fifteen, now we are going to be going into closed session?
Mm-mm.
Yes.
Oh, we are?
Yes, we are.
Yes.
We're going to have three closed sessions. First is public employee performance evaluation, city manager. Second is public employee appointment, interim chief financial officer. And the third is conference with legal counsel existing litigation, it's the Hermosa Hotel versus City of Avalon. If you're watching at home, I expect a half hour, forty-five minutes.
I have to go pack.
I like that. That was nice to add. Baby's very nice.
Yeah, we have one reportable action on item number two, public employee appointment. During closed session, the city council unanimously appointed Chris Wojcik as the interim chief financial officer. No other reportable action was taken.
Thank you. Okay, city manager's report.
Actually, no, we go to item number fifteen, which is approval of, to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with Chris Wojcik to serve as interim chief financial officer.
So, counsel, what you'd be doing with this item is you'd be instructing me to act as your agent to enter into a temporary employee agreement with Mr. Wojcik to oversee our finance department, as the staff report indicates Cindy Byram does not have the bandwidth or the time to continue in that role, Mr. Wojcik effectively would be replacing her as our interim chief financial officer. And so, I'm looking for your authority to enter into an employment agreement with him.
And that's just a matter of authorizing you by consent, not a motion?
You will need to make a motion, and you will need to provide me with a direction, if that's the pleasure of the counsel.
Would like to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment.
Second.
And authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement?
Anything for the audience?
It's been moved and seconded.
All eyes.
Great, thank you. City manager report.
No report, mayor, thank you.
I gave you four things to report on, what happened? No, 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 go ahead. Okay, city attorney?
I already gave my report earlier about prayer and wastewater.
Council members?
Yeah, I have something to report, I believe this is where I do this. And this had, this was concerning an incident that happened on a charter boat, Catalina Express charter boat at the dock in Avalon, and I got a lot of input from it, it was a charter boat, and all the skateboarders were coming over on the boat, and basically there was a search of every single person's bag that was on the float, and it created kind of a chaotic situation down there. And I had a lot of people come up to me and mention this to me, and I had some people that were okay with what the sheriffs did, actually, some of the skaters were okay in the way the sheriffs conducted themselves, although there was a lot of constituents in the, in the city of Avalon that did not like the situation, the way it unfolded on the dock. And that was every single person down there was being searched, there was dogs down there, there was a bit of a chaotic situation where one kid actually almost fell off and dropped a skateboard into the water. I did talk to Greg Bonbarde about this, he was furious about it, and there's a lot of people that think that after all the publicity and marketing that we do for the city of Avalon, we're going backwards when we treat people when they're getting off the boat like this. These were highly skilled, highly trained athletes that were getting off the boat, these skaters, they were from all around the world, and we're giving people a bad idea of what Avalon is about if we attack our guests like this. So, I would like to suggest an agenda item for the city council to review and consider at the May twentieth city council meeting wherein the city, the citizens advisory committee for law enforcement review is created. And this body would be tasked with providing suggestions about the sheriff's department to the sheriff's department, working with the sheriff's department and other stakeholders in Avalon, as to how the sheriff's department may better serve the community in our needs, because, and to further its law enforcement policies, goals, and effectiveness, and where we can correct some of the problems that we faced and that we're facing from the other day. There was some good that came out of it, we saw that, and there was some, some of the other side not so good that came out of it, okay? So, we need to talk about it, we need to put it on the table, and I'm suggesting that we form a committee that we do this. Does anybody have anything or any questions to say?
If you want it on the agenda, we can put it on the agenda for the next meeting. It's the formation of a citizens advisory committee on police, policing matters.
That sounds good to me. Okay, thank you. And then, something else? Can I try something else? Okay, I want to let people know, my uncle Richard Saldana, he's at St. Mary's Hospital, he just got a whole entire shoulder replacement, people are visiting him, he's doing well, he's in a lot of pain, and he's going to be struggling for quite a while, so we could use all the community help we can get for his speedy and great recovery, keep him in your prayers. And he's, he's probably on the sixth floor, and he's going to stay there for rehabilitation and therapy now. So, probably be there for a couple of weeks, and then he's going to come back home, and then our hospital, Catalina Medical Center, will take care of him for a while, make sure he, he's going to be able to go back home. So, Uncle Richard is recovering now, so keep him in your prayers, you guys, and thanks for caring.
Last week, I attended this gag meeting, Southern California Association of Governments and Indian Wells, with the world famous city attorney. Interesting subjects were covered about transportation and good stuff like that, there might be some opportunities for us. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Rich?
I'm good.
I just want to mention that we, each of us as council members, received a letter from a citizen on Lower Terrace Road, and I don't know that we need to read that into the record, but I would like to just communicate to her directly that I think several of us with, involved in the city, and also Dennis and the city manager, are looking into replacing the stairs at, on Lower Terrace Road, and also Dennis Jage is, is going to present some, some reporting as far as monies that it would cost to replace those stairs. Second to that, her request was with regards to signage and some helpful safety signage, which was also favorably received by the city and will be presented, if I understand?
Mirrors, right?
Right. I think the mirrors...
Mirrors and signs.
Mirrors and signs.
So, we'll come back with a change order that you may consider, and I failed to mention that during the written communication, so we're happy to do that, and...
The concern, I think, was, is the timing, because they're building that road, and you know, and if those, do they stop the process while we have to wait to come back to put the stairs in?
Dennis, Dennis seemed convinced that there were a number of things that he could do to address the need to have.
And the time, okay, without having to tear it down to put the stairs down.
And also, the direction from the city and the council previously was to ensure that all of the laterals were, were reviewed and replaced if necessary, and sewer laterals...
Oh, is that part of that letter as well?
Not part of that particular letter, but the, the project of Lower Terrace is stretching a bit, because the city's trying to do due diligence and fixing every possible thing that it can prior to actually paving that road. So, I, this is, would fall within that timeframe.
Okay.
And I...
Go ahead, Cindy.
I, the only other public comment was Tony has asked about street sweeping, and...
Mr. Tony?
Bless Tony, because it's, this is very important to him, but as the street sweeper is not currently running, his, his question is, do we have crews down sweeping in the mornings and ensuring...
We do, but we also are working with CRNR on a proposal to bring contract street services to the, street sweeping services to the city. So, that will be forthcoming for your consideration shortly, we're fine tuning that.
But, but the sweeper is running.
I was told last week it was down again.
Then it should be at the garage then, right?
Yeah, but I was told, it's, it's not reliable, it's up and down all the time.
Yeah, it's working, it should be out there. It's my opinion.
Okay, I'm going to try to run through these quick, because I have a few things. There was a successful community planning meeting held here about a week ago with the VFW and choices and the sheriff's department. Good people, when you talk about this committee thing, but it was wonderful, it was very well received, the three of us were there, and a lot of good stuff came out of that, and I'm, okay. Also, Saturday, from eight to twelve is the community cleanup, and meet at the, the whole community is invited, meet at Wrigley Plaza stage, it's between eight and twelve. They ask that you bring refillable water bottles if you have them, gloves if you have them, and sunscreen, and little snacks and gloves and things will also be provided. So, I'd like to see everybody out there on Saturday cleaning up our city. Also, we had talked about the, the next priorities planning meeting, and do you want to talk to that a minute? We were talking about maybe next week?
Yeah, and Denise, forgive me, we talked about a couple potential dates for that, was it the eleventh and the twelfth?
The twelfth and the thirteenth, I believe, that's Monday and Tuesday.
We, we will come to you to make sure that those work for you. I think at least one of you will not be present, because they'll be twenty-five hundred miles away. We'll, we'll have to duly notice it, of course, and let the public be aware as well.
Okay.
We're thinking a morning type of meeting, May?
Okay.
Yeah, next week. So, we need to poll each one of you individually, we, mayor, forgive us, we did not get to, getting that email out to everybody.
So, the eleventh and twelfth are what we're thinking, and so, the community should be kind of listening for those dates. And I wanted you to give, just because we're all getting hit up about those casino restrooms, if you would take a couple of minutes.
Sure, I, sorry, real quick, so we are actively working with the island company about the temporary placement of restrooms behind the casino building, because as everyone here probably well knows, we have a real issue with the sanitary condition and usefulness of the porta potties that are out there now. The city, at its own expense, has procured a temporary restroom trailer, and this is one of those nice trailers, similar to what the conservancy has, you've probably seen it at special events where there's doors that close, and it's, you know, it's a nice unit. We are actually hooking it, proposing to hook it into the city sewer system, into the pump that's right there by the pump out dock, and so we have to trench, we have to put in what's called a macerator, which grinds up objects in case somebody happens to shove something down the toilet, that's one of our big problems we have with the porta potties now. It's going to be a nice setup, and what we're working with the island company on, because it's their property, is, is the immediate and then the long-term need out there. We recognize that we need to get something out there, we're getting letters, we're getting complaints, we are alienating, we believe, a big chunk of our visitor population who happens to be divers that are going out there and they're having to deal with this situation. Long-term, we've talked to the island company, and they're in agreement that we need to figure out a solution. There needs to be a true dive park center, if you will, out there, buildings that, that complement the casino building, that allow for people to be able to change comfortably, kind of maybe like what Descanso Beach has with other amenities. Maybe there's a dive gear shop there that has supplies that are needed, or a place to refill your air, and, and a bathroom. So, anyway, we're, we're working with the island company on that as well, so.
Okay.
We hope to have the temporary restrooms installed sooner than later, this month would be our goal, get them up and running, have a nicer setup out there.
Okay, and we're paying the people to come and clean currently? That's our contract?
We are, as part of our contract to clean the city bathrooms, that is one of the stops.
Okay.
Our public works crew would be doing the trenching and the installation of the connection to the sewer. We have to buy this macerator and a couple other parts to make it a reality, but we're trying to chippy choppy get this moving sooner than later, so that we have something in place.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I forgot about that one as well.
No, that's okay. All righty, well, I think we can adjourn this meeting.
Oh, he stole it.
I did steal it, they'll just make it.